We'd like to welcome everyone out to the Highland City Council meeting on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. It is 7:01 PM. We will begin our meeting by having an invocation by Councilmember Brittany Bills. Follow the Pledge of Allegiance will be myself.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful today to be able to come together as friends and members of our community to talk about our city and the things that are happening here and how we can make Highland a better place. We're grateful for all those residents who have taken the time to come and share their opinions and taken their time to be with us and pray that we will be able to make all of our decisions with wisdom and compassion. We're grateful for our police and our fire and pray that that will protect them. We also ask for a blessing to be with those in the world who are struggling and who don't enjoy the same peace that we have here. Again, we're so grateful for the opportunity we have to live and to be here in this beautiful community and ask for thy Spirit tonight in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
What a great week we have this week where we get to celebrate our freedom is the Fourth of July. And as I looked at that flag, what it stood and stands for, I appreciate those standing to do the pledge. As we look tonight, we do have a set time for what's called unscheduled public appearances. We will be having public hearings. So if you're here to talk to the council on anything other than the four public hearings, which will be, we will have a public hearing on the school district, the proposal for doing an interlocal agreement. We also have a public hearing on offense regulations, trail corridors, collector roads, and retaining walls. We'll have a public hearing on swimming pool regulations amendments and a public hearing and an ordinance change with the residential conditional use amendment. So if you're here to discuss with the council on anything that's not part of those four public hearings, we invite you to please come up at this time. Please state your name and if you can keep your comments to three minutes. Also, those who are going to be speaking, if you wouldn't mind just signing the roll off the side. It just helps our recorder make sure we get your name correct and we can spell it correctly. So at this time, we set a open up for unscheduled public appearances, those who'd like to come and address the council. And we're not, so we're not going to be having public hearings on if you're here for the Alpine Fence or for the Mountain Ridge Park amenity. So if you'd like to discuss any of those, we invite you to come up at this time to discuss that with the council. Okay, seeing none, we'll now close our unscheduled public appearances. We do have a presentation. We have North Point Solid Waste here. We have Neil Schwindeman that is here to give us a presentation. So Neil.
Thank you for allowing me to come and present. I know your schedule is full tonight, so I'm going to set the bar and I'm going to make it so everything's going to be quick tonight, okay? Because I like to talk trash, but I'll, I'll try to go quickly. How do I adjust this for you? All right. So I have a bunch of North Point history here. I'm not going to cover all of it. Some of the main history, in 1976, the district was created. It was called Utah County Solid Waste Special Service District. The location where we're currently at was used as a landfill. In 1993, the transfer station was built and the landfill was closed. And in 2006, well, at that time, we were shipping our waste by rail to ECDC landfill. And then in 2006, we switched to rail transport, from rail transport to truck transport and transported our waste to the Wasatch Regional Landfill out in Twilla County. Go ahead. In 2012, the district purchased the Cedar Valley Construction Demolition Landfill out in Fairfield and some of the others. In 2016, important one, North Point became a member of New Era, which is an interlocal group made up of Wasatch Integrated, Transjordan Landfill, South Utah Valley Solid Waste and North Point Solid Waste. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. I have been with North Point since 2020 and is the general, I'm the general manager. On this map, you can see the Wasatch Regional Landfill on Twilla County up on the upper left and ECDC landfill there on the bottom right. Those were the two places that we used to be transporting our waste to. Now, all of our typical household waste, our municipal solid waste and restaurants and grocery stores, all that waste goes to the New Era Bayview landfill down there at the Southwest Utah Lake. And then all of our construction demolition landfill goes out to our North Point CND landfill up there in Fairfield. Go ahead. So some of the services that we offer at the transfer station, our municipal solid waste is mostly comprised of residential curbside. So your contracts that you have with, I don't know if you're using waste management or waste management. So all of those trucks are part of the MSW, commercial front load, roll-off trucks, and then a lot of small commercial and public self-haul. So a lot of your residents that come in and visit our facility. Our construction and demolition waste is mostly commercial roll-off, small commercial and public self-haul. We have green waste that's mostly small commercial and public self-haul. We have an agreement with a contractor to come in, grind up the green waste, compost it, and we sell some of that compost. We also have clean concrete that we can take in. It gets ground up and made into two products, road base and drain rock. And then we offer household hazardous waste disposal for residents. They can bring in stuff such as paints, chemicals, batteries, cleaners and stuff like that. And then we recycle also tires, metal and electronics. So this is our transfer station tons. This is our municipal solid waste over the years. I haven't quite figured out why 2012 was so high, but you can see we've grown over the years. Last year, well, COVID 2020 was our high year, but last year we did 170,500 tons just in MSW through the transfer station. Go ahead to the next one. This is our construction and demolition waste. You can see how much it's grown over the years. 130,625 tons of just of construction and demolition waste. And then our total of 301,132. So overall, last year was our biggest year of taking over 300,000 tons of waste through our transfer station. This pie chart here, the purple and the red make up all of the MSW, but the purple, so 35% comes from the curbside waste from all of our member cities. And then we have the CND at 41%. The rest of the MSW is 19% and the green waste and the CF is clean filler of the concrete. This is our fee history over the years. We, in '23, went up to $34 a ton. This is just for what the city pays for the curbside waste coming to our facility. So that's what you end up charging the residents for. We're at 34 a ton for that. And this is the Highland number specifically. The pie chart there, you can see how you compare to the other cities. And Highland there is at 8% of the total residential curbside waste. Not the total waste coming into the transfer station, but this is just the curbside coming from the homes. We took in, well, we, we helped 4,155 self-haul customers from the city of Highland. There was 39 city vehicles that came in and in the cleanup, we took in 9.92 tons of cleanup material when you put out cans for those cleanups. And this is Highland's curbside history over the years. Again, 2020 COVID was a high year. Everybody staying home, cleaning up their, their homes and whatnot. And then last year, we did 8,796 tons of curbside waste from Highland. So what is the future of the district? In 21, we started a master plan. It was completed in '22. That master plan was to determine what, what we were going to do with our facility long-term. It's, it's had a lot of deferred maintenance. It needs, it needs some help. So that plan was to give us some recommendations on what we need to do moving forward. Go ahead. This here just talks about some of it, repairing some of the structures, doing some, some drainage control, re-grading our site to make things flow better. There was two viable options that we looked at that would help us handle volumes for the next 25 years. And expanding the current site remained the most cost-effective. We looked at maybe relocating some other places or adding another facility somewhere else. Go ahead. This is just some of the pictures of our current site. You can see the siding on the, on our buildings getting torn off and whatnot. And then down at the bottom right-hand is some water near our construction and demolition area that all needs to be fixed and corrected. So this is some, an idea of what we could do. We want to expand that, the building there where that truck is backing in. That would be an expansion to our basically small commercial and public side to open that up more and provide us an additional loading area for, for the future. So it talked about joining New Era. So in 2022, we lined a new cell down at Bayview. We installed a gas collection system, which is now going to be, the methane pulled off of that is going to be cleaned up and injected into a natural gas pipeline. We also acquired an additional 140 acres with the SITLA lease and we extended that lease through December 31st of 2082. But there'll still be capacity in the landfill for many years beyond that. And our estimated life of the Bayview landfill down there is 99-plus years. We have lots of room to continue taking our trash. In summary, some of the, the costs for our transfer station upgrades and what our master plan found was it would cost somewhere between $10 and $15 million. The board, North Point didn't have the ability to do any bonding through the county. We finally, county approved some, a resolution to allow us to issue revenue bonds. And so we have that ability to move forward and look at improving our facilities so we can continue to, to provide the services going forward. And with Bayview's landfill capacity and being part of New Era, we're able to control our rates in that landfill. Currently, we're at $10.50 a ton that we have to pay for disposal, which are some of the lowest rates in the state of Utah. I want to say thank you to the city staff on a great relationship. Thanks to Scott for serving on our board. He's always got lots of good questions and I appreciate that. It's very helpful. So thank you. And then I just wanted to show some, some modern transfer station, what they, what they look like today instead of just a metal building with falling off tin. Go ahead to the next one. This one is pretty cool. On that concrete wall is a bunch of bicycle rims that they repurposed and used for decorations on the, on the transfer station retaining wall. This is just the inside of a Berkeley recycling and transfer station. Go ahead. And the outside of that one as well. This one right here is the brand-new facility down in Spanish Fork, our Southern Utah. It's SUV, Southern Utah Valley Solid Waste District. This is 108,000 square foot transfer station. Beautiful, state-of-the-art facility if anybody's interested in going on a tour. We'll take it. And then there's a few pictures. This is the inside of it. They have a big, actually have a water cannon in there that, and infrared cameras. If there's any hotspots in the trash, they can put out fires before they get started, which is a great thing because we had a fire in ours, probably the biggest one we've ever had just a couple of weeks ago. It was, wasn't very fun. Just some more of their, their pictures of their facility. This is the lookout tower that they can oversee all of their operations and whatnot. So the point of, of it is, is transfer stations these days can look much better than what we currently have, but we're working on upgrading ours and reskinning it and making it look nicer. Any questions?
Yes, on the 26 acres, you have a lining that you do around. What does that meet up of?
So there's several different layers. First, you have to go in and excavate and then make sure there's no rocks down on the bottom. And then there's like a 60-mill plastic liner that's in 20-foot rolls. They roll that out. They actually overlap it and they have a machine that goes in and welds it together. And there's a little pocket and they have to pressurize that, that little pocket in between those two welds and test the pressure on it for a certain period of time. If it passes, great. If not, they have to go find the leak and repair it. On top of that then is a fabric and plastic mesh layer. And then on top of that, we put 18 inches of like a clay type of soil. Actually, the first layer wasn't the 60-mill. The first layer is a fabric mat that's about that thick with bentonite in it. So stuff that won't allow the, what we call leachate to pass through, the clay layer and all the plastic and then the bentonite at the bottom.
These are open. I'm just wondering where all the water goes when water does come down through.
So we have to manage that water. Luckily, we're in a dry climate. So a lot of landfills back east, they, they have to send their leachate, leachate off to a wastewater collection facility and have it treated, which is huge cost. But luckily, we're in an arid climate. We, we have a couple ponds that we can, that are lined that we can pump it to and that the liquid evaporates off.
And then Scott, I believe with you being on the board, you had some employee questions?
Yeah, I don't have particular questions because we had, recently had a board meeting. But I'd just like to thank Neil for coming. And I've never heard you speak so fast. But let me just kind of tell a couple of things. It's interesting just to highlight a couple of things. So the CND, which stands for construction and demolition, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
The landfill is out by Fairfield. And we have some kind of famous structures that are in there, landfill, the prison, if I understand right. The prison's there and Harris Fine Arts Center is there. I don't know if the Provo Temple ended up there or not.
Actually, it was better to send the Provo Temple down to Bayview. It was a little bit closer.
Right, directly to Bayview. Okay. Because I was teasing some of my patients from Fairfield that they were getting a temple. But it's really interesting. The construction and demolition, there's been so much of it with the growth here in Utah and rebuilding and that, that that's actually fueling a lot of the income for the center, which keeps our fees for the city slow. But the facility really needs to be upgraded. And so the bonding, there's no plan to raise taxes or anything. It'll be paid for by fees, but we're doing well with fees. Hopefully we will in the near future, but obviously we need some improvements there. Because if you've been down there, we haul a lot of stuff down to the, my family's all familiar with the landfill. So we, we appreciate all your service and the great way you've been managing it the last four years.
Well, thank you. I wanted to come on a regular basis and give an update of the, the tons and whatnot. And I want to, my plan is to come earlier in the year so I can help before your budget season and say, this is kind of what we're anticipating for fees. So that way you're ahead of the game instead of behind the game when it comes to the fees. So any other questions?
Thank you very much, Neil, for coming.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we'll now move on to our item number three, which is consent item for the library board appointments. Is there a motion or?
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve consent item 2A, library board appointments.
I'll second that.
A motion by Kim, second by Ron. Okay, that passes five to zero. We'll now move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing will be for the public hearing for the Alpine School District Interlocal Agreement. And we have a presentation, I believe, by one of our councilmembers, Brittany Bills, that we'll go through and then we'll have, do you want to do the presentation first? Do you want to have public hearing? Probably presentation because that might help answer some questions.
That's great. Thanks, Mayor. Okay, so first I just kind of want to introduce this, this topic. So this presentation is really just about the facts and kind of the process that's happened until now and where the process will go from here. So there are no decisions that have been made. This is not in any way an indictment of Alpine School District saying that they haven't educated kids properly or they're doing anything wrong. This is just an opportunity for us to present this to voters and then let them make the decision as to what they would like to do going forward. So that's all this is about tonight. So we're going to be talking about the Central School District and that is just a temporary name that is assigned to the cities that have signed an interlocal agreement. So that is Alpine, American Fork, Cedar Hills, Draper, Little Section of Draper, Highland and Lehigh. So the Central School District is just a temporary name that it's been given. And if the district were to be created, then a school board at that time would give the, give the district a name. So kind of what has been done up until this point is, I think most of you probably know that Alpine School District did their own study and they came up with some different options that they said were feasible and, and possible for a school district split. And so what we have done is taken one of those options to study further and then we'll put it in front of the voters and let them decide what they would like to do. So we had our own study that was presented two weeks ago. Representatives from all six cities were in attendance and that is on the, the new website, which I will show you in a minute so that you can reference it if you would like to. But we had the study firm look at enrollment and taxable value, the general fund, capital projects fund, debt service and taxes. So those are basically the things that we had them look at in their analysis. And they presented the results of that two weeks ago. So there are always a lot of assumptions when you go into something like this and some of the assumptions that were made here, and these of course aren't perfect, but they're what we, what we had to go with. The final tax impact will depend on decisions of a potential future school board. So some people have suggested that for city councils, this is all about power and wanting to control the schools. I can't speak for the other city council members, but I think none of us have the desire for knowledge to control the schools. That's not what this is about. So the future school board, if this passed, would be the ones who would make all of those decisions. We did find out, or we did assume in the study as well that the Central School District has a slightly higher taxable value per student compared to the district as a whole. Future taxable values will be influenced by actual growth, future development and property tax changes, none of which we know exactly right now, of course. And future property tax revenues could be impacted by establishment of redevelopment areas. So a lot of this is just a best guess, but we hired a really reputable firm to help us with that. Two different scenarios that they looked at were scenario one, where you have an enrollment a percent decrease in student enrollment, because that is something we would need to consider. And the second one really considered the percentage of facilities that would need to be constructed, operated and maintained in order to create this new district. And what they found was that the Central School District is a feasible and viable alternative. So in either one of those scenarios, they found that this is feasible and for a couple of different reasons. Number one, there is a potential for tax savings actually by the creation of this district. More opportunity for local control, which makes a, a better ability to meet student needs. So of course, a lot of these things would depend on decisions made by a future school board. And again, we're just here to present the information tonight. So kind of the process as it's gone before now and then going forward is on April 29th, the cities voted to create an interlocal agreement. You may have heard about another interlocal agreement that happened in the western part of the district. And that is a separate agreement than ours from Eagle Mountain, Saratoga Springs, Fairfield and Cedar Fort. So their city councils unanimously voted to put a potential split in the west on a ballot in November. So the, this second split that is being proposed with this central district is completely separate from that. So they will vote on a western split and if city councils decide to, then people in our area would devote, would vote on this central district split. Okay, so that already happened. So that was a unanimous vote of six city councils. And again, that vote was just to put the issue on the ballot, to study it more and most importantly, in my mind, to gather public feedback. So on June 18th, is that when we had our meeting, Erin, where the presentation was presented? So that's when we got our study and that is when our public comment period started. And then starting today, this is the first of the public hearings in those six cities that I talked about. Each city will have two public hearings, so that will be a total of 12 opportunities to let us know what you think about this proposal. On August 2nd, that public comment period ends, the public hearings are over. And then on August 6th, those city councils will decide whether or not to put the question on the ballot. And then again, in November, the actual decision will be made by voters in this area, not by elected officials. It will be voted on by voters in this area as to whether or not they would like to create this new school district. So it's important to remember that anything regarding funding, financial details, the financing, what programs are offered as far as special education programs, language programs, any of that, everything like compensation for teachers, maintenance, all of those things will be decided by future school boards. This is not our expertise. This is not something that we'll have a say in. All we're doing is creating an opportunity for voters to express their opinions about it. One thing that's not in the presentation that I think is important to mention is that I think that this area has always shown a commitment to students and to education and to teachers. So I think any assumption that those things would not still be valued is not correct. I feel like I, I think that all of us still value education and we value teachers. So those kinds of decisions will be made in the future. So the next steps, like I said, in November, voters will decide whether or not they want to create this new school district. So voters in the west will have the opportunity to vote on a western school district. We here will have the opportunity to vote on a central school district. And if for some reason this central school district is not what residents want, not what people want, then that is what they will vote for in November. And then we would revert back to being a district or stay as part of a district with the cities in the southern. So part of the, the county, so Orem, Lyndon, Pleasant Grove and Vineyard. So there are really two options here for voters on the ballot. One is whether we create a central school district and the second one is, and then if that is not created by default, then everybody remains together. So those are the, the next steps. New school member board, new board members would be elected in November of 2025, so that following year. And in January of 2026, they would take office to prepare for operations of a new school district in July of 2027. So opening probably August of 2027. Like I said, right now, this is just purely informational. We're holding these information sessions, the public hearings, because we want to know what people think. If you want more information, there's a website set up at centraleschooldistrict.org. If you have opinions, you can express them there. We are really collecting all different opinions and we want to hear every perspective. This is really something that we want to do what residents want. Residents will have the ultimate say at the ballot and we hope that everybody will take the, the opportunity to research. So I guess the last thing that I would say is, I talked about how we all want what's best for our students academically. And that is absolutely, that is absolutely correct. But as I've been talking about this with my kids and they've been hearing things, I think the other thing that I would ask us to do is, let's make sure that we choose the best possible outcomes for our kids, but let's also have those conversations in a way that is appropriate for students to hear and to understand and so that they can learn what, what appropriate discourse sounds like. I just think it's such an important skill to learn and I think this has the potential to be a really divisive issue where maybe we are not at our best selves. And my kids have already seen a little bit of that and I'm, I'm hopeful that, that as we continue, we can really elevate the dialogue and make good decisions. So that's all I have, Mayor.
With that, I also, Rob, did you have anything you wanted to add part of that presentation? I saw your name on the, Scott, did you have a comment before you go to public?
I just had a question. Brittany, I think this was an excellent presentation, summarized very well. Everybody's speaking fast tonight. It's interesting. I appreciate it.
Was I speaking fast?
Yeah, we were going through things fast. I'm just teasing you. But when you talk about higher taxable value of the Central School District, are you talking about our property values are higher? Or is there just a lot of commercial businesses? What do you mean by higher taxable value?
I'm going to let Erin take that one.
I'd say it's a combination of what you're outlining, Councilmember Smith, is just, because that's how a lot of the funding comes, is based on taxable value. And so those six cities have a higher taxable value than if you look at, per student, than if you look at the southern cities ultimately. So homes, commercial businesses, everything that way.
Very good. I think that answers. I just kind of wanted to clarify that for the public.
Absolutely.
Because I think you could misconstrue that and say, hey, we're going to have our taxes really raised up. And so the other thing that no one ever mentions is it just seems like the Alpine School District administrative building is in the central district. And I think there's some advantages of having the administrative building in our, in the central district. Is there not? No one ever talks about that. No one ever talks about that.
So I think, and Rob can correct me if I'm incorrect, but I think that legislation is fairly clear on the way now that assets are divided. And I think what happens, Councilmember Smith, is that if there were, for example, a three-way split, or with a two-way split, the assets that are in, physically in that area, remain in that area, but then other areas are given credit for those, basically. So we would keep whatever assets are here physically in this part of the district, which would include the district office and American Fork, because they are part of our interlocal agreement. But then other districts would, would basically get credit for that, so that everything balances out, so that we don't get a disproportionate amount of the resources coming to a central school district theoretically. Is that correct, Rob?
It is correct. There's a, if the voters approve the creation of a new district, there's a fairly involved process of getting a new school board. Current school board stays on for a while to continue providing educational services, and part of their new duties would be to then go through a, you get the state involved who helps analyze the various assets of the school, including cash on hand, physical assets, buses, anything you can think of, desks, all of that, and kind of allocate it between the districts in a equitable manner.
Scott, I think one of the reasons why we might get some questions from residents is they hear about some school districts up in the Salt Lake County that had a split, and they hear about that, that split was not as applicable. But I believe that the state legislators have went in, and Rob, you can help, they went in to try to help address, if there is a split, how do those assets get divvied up, and how do they get compensated in a sense? So you're saying, hey, as, if we happen to have that, to me, how I guess I've interpreted, we have the district office, we have to compensate the other, other partners, if you want to say, that have been part of Alpine School District somehow financially, as we take on that asset, or as we look at assets. In our presentation, they actually came up with a percentage that they felt that the central district should take on as part of that. That was that, I believe it was in the 40s, it was 45%?
I don't recall the exact number, but the division of assets also includes the debt the school district has. So the school has various bonds outstanding, and those would also get split out between the reorganized and new school district, if that were to happen. So it is a, it's, I think there is, like the mayor, you were saying, there was a little bit of a learning process at the state legislature after the Canyons-Jordan split. So there's a little more guidance now about how to handle that equitably between, when there is a school district split.
And then I think, you know, Brittany, maybe you kind of addressed a little more, there's gonna be a lot of concern, are we really consider about the students, the teachers, the administrators? Because I, we talked, I mean, we talked a lot about taxes. This might be a beneficial tax, but the, you know what, the outcome of the school district split, as, I don't know if anyone wants to, you know, I've always felt like the teachers are really an important, I mean, they're kind of that key that drives that education. So any school district, I've always felt, would have to really be, that's their job, is to make sure they have the best educators. And their job is really to educate the kids. And so I've always felt, with any type of school district realignment, we're focusing on the kids, and to make sure that the method, how we teach those kids, and the way that those administrators have been, I look at this as a big, you know, we have to balance all that, but it's, we're also looking to see what's best for the kids. So, and that was what, that's what the voters are gonna have to do. They're gonna look at, they're gonna look at the best for the kids, they're gonna look at, someone will look at their pocketbook and things that way. With that, are we ready to go to public hearing on this? Okay. What we'd ask, if you, we have two sign-in sheets on the site. If you can please make sure you take the opportunity to sign in, it will help as you make public comment, and make sure you get your name spelled right. Because you will be, if you come up in the public, you're now gonna be part of the public record, and we put your name in it, just FYI. But we're gonna ask, this time, we're getting ready to open our public hearing on the Alpine School District realignment. We ask that if you've heard others come up and make the same comment, you're welcome to come up, but just say, hey, I, I support that comment that person had, that we don't, please try to keep the comments limited on that. But we'd like you, if you come up, please state your full name. If you'll also just keep your comments to three minutes, and try to keep them concise. If we've heard it before, you can reinforce, hey, I support what this person said. So at this time, we'll now open up the public hearing for the Alpine School District realignment. If anyone would like to come up and address the council.
Hello, I'm Pamela Sue Redman. I did sign up. I apologize by my appearance. I came straight from the yard work to not miss this important occasion. I applaud the school, the city for taking on this themselves to consider a new school district. I know that Brittany said some of these things I'm gonna say is not, you don't make the decision regarding this, the voters will, but this is why I feel like it needs to happen. I feel like the district has been unaccountable and financially deaf to the concerns of the constituents and parents, especially those with, children's with special needs. I think their decisions have been abominable. The superintendent seems to be overpaid and appears to be unresponsive to both citizens in the state school board and the legislature. I hope that no one currently in the school district will never be hired in this new district, and that goes for the school board itself. The school board has misused taxpayer monies and produced a video to influence our teachers to support a single district. They're using our money to scare them, saying, everything you've worked for is gonna be taken away, your benefits, your salaries, and everything. So in order for this to succeed, you're going to have to win the hearts of the teachers and, and make them confident that this is gonna work. We have the financial plan, we have the, and we have your concerns at heart. We're gonna make sure your benefits, your insurance, your salary, your, your job concerns are gonna be taken care of, because we're working against unfair influences. I think the school district has been unfair, and a question I have, because I'm kind of ignorant about how all this happened, but I went, in spite of what the voters wanted about their taxes, not wanting to be raised for the school district, they wanted the school district to be more accountable and make some cuts there, they went to the county commission and asked, you know, for tax increases. Forty people got up and begged them not to do this, saying that this was going to be dead, especially single seniors. And they're totally, well, we've decided we're gonna do that, so what about you guys cutting your salaries? We're all, you know, doing with less now, and as inflation gets worse. And they were totally deaf. So I hope, I applaud you doing this. I hope it goes forward. I hope it succeeds.
Hello, my name's Amber Gardner, and I'm a Highland resident of 26 years. Just a little bit about me, I have a really big background in volunteerism at the schools. In fact, that's how I met Brittany Bells here. For many, many years, I was the SEC president at Highland, and she was the PTA president, and we were known communally as one name. But I also have many, many years of volunteering on, at all three schools my kids went to. They all went here. My kids have had an excellent education. But for the past 10 years, I have worked for the school district. I worked five years at Mountain Ridge, I was the finance secretary, I answered phones. And these past five years, I work at the purchasing department at the Linden campus. There are many campuses of Alpine School District. It is just not the district office. But I've been in the unique position to work in the support staff of Alpine School District, and at no time was I shown a video convincing me of what I should do. I'm here of my own free will. But I, I just wanted to give my support for staying together. I know that most people came here to speak differently, but I am proud of Alpine School District. They do a good job with their hands being tied. You know, many years ago, they took away the fees when a neighborhood comes in, and they build thousands of homes. Those developers do not, they're not obligated to the school district at all to give any money for schools or land. And like, you got, I've been on the past few bond committees, you gotta do what you gotta do. Like, you still have to educate these kids, you have to put them in houses. And anyway, I've been in the unique position of being over here and purchasing with the warehouse and the physical facilities and the technology department. That's where they're all housed. And I have extreme concerns about the infrastructure of a three-way split. I do believe the two-way split has been in the works for years, and slowly, with the minute amount of taxpayer money, they've been building facilities out west. There's a bus depot, there's a technology hub, but we are not prepared to split in three. And as an employee, I am most definitely not in favor of it. Not just because I'm worried about my job, I'm not worried about that, but I do think that the programs and the, the things available to our children by being a large district are greater than people understand. So that's what I have to say about that.
Hello, Highland friends. My name is James Porter. I'm from Pleasant Grove, so thanks for announcing that you were willing to listen to others from other communities. I'll start off by clearly stating that I think there are many educational and community benefits in keeping Alpine School District as a single entity, and I worry about the impact two interlocal agreements will have on all students. It saddens me, saddens me that there's so much emphasis on reducing taxes. Here are some of the things that I'm worried about. I'm worried that if the split goes through the west side, it's going to have such a high burden to meet the needs of their students that could be shouldered collectively, especially because I don't believe the district will be able to push for a bond or other immediate items during the transition period for any of the three areas. Any newly formed district will not have the power to enact any immediate changes, and it'll take years for them to be able to do that for all areas. So I'm really worried about the students who are going to be impacted during that transition time. I'm worried that we might be moving forward so quickly and basing decisions on limited feasibility studies that don't fully examine educational issues. I appreciate that you brought up that that was one of the focuses we need to have. We're voting on the biggest decision that we have made in decades in our area, and I worry about when the interlocal agreement was brought up at first. It was done in hours, days, a very short time before that took place. And so for something so big, I just want to make sure that we do enough time to prepare for it. My next worry, maybe would help those who are wanting to focus on money, I'm worried that large businesses who get tax breaks and move into our communities are going to have even more leveraging power over the smaller districts that they would be in. I'm also worried that in instances where those companies would look to donate, they may not consider our communities as much, because we don't have as much attention as we previously held. Speaking of influence, as a larger district has influence with policies, I think some of that would be lost. I'm worried about the political implications of not standing up against HB 3003. I don't like that there are groups advocating for a split and local control who simultaneously cheer that a large government entity stepped in and dictated who could have a say in this process, especially since it's a temporary change. That bothers me. If we're looking to have better control, I don't think that that should be the impetus that made it possible. You know, yesterday, I'll conclude with this, I woke up and I thought about the wonderful opportunities that my children have being a part of this community. And there's a lot of people that don't have the same opportunities that we have, and I worry that we are spending our time and having rhetoric amongst the adults that shows that we are focused on things that are less important, that though there is significance in what's going on with our taxes, we need to be focused on the educational outcome. I also want my children to be able to live in any of these cities and get a similar educational opportunity.
Hi, my name is Molly Barrington, and my son goes to Highland Elementary, and we actually live in Lehigh. He got an out-of-boundaries extension when we moved from American Fork to Lehigh. And I cannot say enough good about the community at Highland Elementary. They love our kids, all of them, whether they have a little, a few extra special needs, or whether they are in the advanced learning program, or wherever they are, they are cared for, and I want to see that continue. And as I have studied the issues, and I have been attending board meetings, school board meetings for the past three years, and I'm very well-versed. And right now, I am very much in support of a three-way split, because I, not only will the districts literally have more local control, because kids get lost in a district this big, and they get, oversight is not as good as it should be, and especially in special ed. And they've made progress in the past few years, but it's still nowhere where it needs to be. And I feel like that no matter which way it works, if we split in two, or we split in three, or we don't split at all, I think we need to be very informed on how we vote. We need to talk to the teachers, we need to talk to the people in our community that are gonna be voting on this. And rather than trying to persuade, just make sure that the right facts are out there. And I'm, the other thing that makes me want to split, besides more local control, is that right now, our school board is not working very well together. And especially for Lehigh and the areas out west, it's very, very hard to get resources allocated to them that are very prevalent in the east. And I really want to see them be able to help themselves, and I don't think that this is gonna be easy. I have no illusions of that. But I also think that by not splitting, we have some other problems that need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up and address the council on this?
Hi, thank you, councilmembers. My name is Wendy Hart. I'm a resident of Highland. I had the honor and the privilege of serving you as the representative on the Alpine School Board for eight years between 2011 and 2018. I am personally in favor of a school district split. I have spent a lot of time talking about it over that period of time. At some point, it was obvious that we would get so large that we would need to split, and the main reason for that is because of local control. The district has different areas of need. The west has outstanding growth, and the south has a lot of needs with Title I and refurbishing of buildings and things like that. Us here, we're kind of in the middle between those two things that are polarizing us. One of the things that I think would be beneficial is that on things like bonding, there is greater accountability. Bonds were designed for the group of people who are incurring the debt to receive the direct benefit and to oversee those funds directly. And even though it's nice to say we're sharing that out over 14 municipalities, it is important to note that while I was on the school board, Highland City residents paid approximately 9% of the total local property tax that went to Alpine School District. On the bonds that were passed, we received approximately less than 1% of the bonding funds. And they weren't done so that we could say that we, we put them throughout the district, and we wanted to do that, but we didn't have the level of need that, say, the west or the south had. So I believe that this split will allow us to look at our needs in our area and take care of those. It is also important to say that Utah has a very equalized funding mechanism for our schools, so even though we will have increased tax value locally, we will then receive a lesser amount from the state. So for example, receive a lesser amount from the state. So for example, property taxes in Park City are very, very high. They do not receive state funding for their schools. Alpine School District, on the other hand, receives a lot of state funding for our schools because our property values are significantly less. What the feasibility study says is that our values in the central district would be slightly more than what would occur if we stayed together, but that doesn't mean that the funding for the kids in the south is going to be less than the funding for the kids here. They will be equalized because the state does that for us. So anyway, we can also work on inter-local agreements for busing and warehousing and things like that. So the bottom line is, the principle of the matter is the accountability for bonding and local control because our needs are different, and we might be able to meet those needs better. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to thank you so much for beginning this process. I think it's been several years in the making that, that people-
Nikki, would you mind just stating your name for the record?
Oh, sure. My name's Nikki Brammer. I live in Highland. Also, I guess, I'll also state, I've served on several school community councils. I've been a dues-paying member of the PTA for a long time. I've been on the district community council, and I'm currently the president of the Utah Association for Gifted Children. But this has been a long time in coming. I've now read four different feasibility studies, and every single one comes back and says, this is feasible. Someone that I deeply respect, that has been leading the Alpine School District, told me about a year ago, everybody knows this is feasible. Everybody knows it. The question is, how do we divide up a district this size? And I do agree that that is, that's the hard part, right? And so that's why I appreciate so much that we had 10 city councils, who are the most local representation, who are most in tune with our cities and our constituents, who came to the table to say, you know, we're hearing from everybody that we should probably make this more local. Most important factor for me is representation. We currently have only seven school board members that represent over 84,000 students. In our own district, we basically have about two and a half, two maybe, if you count Sarah Beeson and Stacy Bateman, that represent our areas. If we divide into the central district, we will have seven. That's, that's drastic improvement in representation. It's not lost on me that the city councils all are very in tune with constituents and voted unanimously, and our school board members are the ones asking us to do a poll. Well, we don't believe you. How do we know? Well, it's because you are in tune with the cities, your constituents, and our school board members are not. So for me, this really goes back to representation. A lot of people have talked about bonding. I really worry that we won't be able to pass a bond again, given the size of our district, and bonding is the primary way that we fund capital building projects. I respect the wisdom of the three district split because my understanding is that each district would have a significant high school rebuild, and that seems very equitable to me. More than anything in my last few seconds to finish, you know, I think it's important to recognize the people who stand up and are somewhat against this right now, and they are employees. We have consistently supported employees. We want to honor their retirement packages. Utah Retirement Systems is where those are secured, and that won't go away. I think that we can prioritize additional benefits. Every school community council that I've served on has always stood by our teachers, and I think that we can continue to do that. I do have a lot more to say, but I'll write it in a written comment for you. Thank you so much.
Is there any else that would like to come up and address the council on this topic? Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing on the Alpine School District. We do have another public hearing that will be on, coming up on July 16th on the same issue for those who are interested. Counsel, I assume we're okay to move on to the next item? We will now move on to item number B, which is fence regulations dealing with trail corridors, collector roads, and retaining walls, and that will be Rob Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thanks to all the residents who came. We have one item that I managed to multiply into six because I'm that good of an attorney. So I've outlined the six kind of breakdown of topics to discuss. The first one is the largest item, but the rest of the five might be more discussion-based. So the first ordinance for you to consider, the general cleanup ordinance. This is mostly just consolidating, cleaning up definitions, and clarifying some issues that have just come up as I've been processing fence permits and retaining wall permits. To make my process and the standards we apply a little more consistent throughout the city, one of the major things was clarifying what a retaining wall is and is not. On the next slide, we have a little diagram. This is our current ordinance. You can have a two-foot retaining wall, a six-foot fence on top of it. If the retaining wall extends over the ground on the higher side, it counts towards the fence height to a maximum of six. And if you have a planter box or something small near the retaining wall, that doesn't count. We still measure it from the actual elevation of the ground, other than the new code. Cleaning up just, fence has to be on the person's property. As we discussed during the council site tour, I proposed allowing for fence caps and posts to exceed the fence height by a little bit. People like to decorate their columns a little bit. I proposed a six-inch additional height with a little bit of width requirement there. And then cleaning up that screen walls and theme walls, those are walls around developments or commercial areas are subject generally to all fence regulations unless they're more specifically defined elsewhere. On the next slide is a diagram again. This is the column post height explanation. So it's, you can have up to six and a half feet, up to two feet wide on top, and you have to have posts at least four feet apart. That allows for a gate in between. People are likely going to do wider than that. We're just sitting in mid-range, so you don't just say, I have a fence made of columns constantly.
Rob?
Yes.
My recollection on that last diagram was that the proposed code changes talk about four feet between not just the posts, but the caps as well.
That, let me double-check what I wrote. And I'm sure you remember it very correctly, Doug. I'm just checking myself.
Tell me why doesn't it remember again, just to kind of-
I'm recalling that instead of four feet between posts, it is four feet between-
The top columns.
It is. So if they have, say, a wider column, that the top part's wider than the column underneath, you'd actually measure it four from the column. So that diagram is inaccurate.
So we'd be measuring the four feet up by with the top cap?
Yes. It'd actually be four feet in between those. So, good catch, Doug. That is how it's written in the ordinance.
And you're saying the cap, the cap maximum is two feet, right?
Correct. Two feet wide.
Because like you said, some of us will try to go and say, oh, let's just make a whole bunch of fences with caps.
Well, right. I mean, that's the big issue, is whether you cap your whole fence. But you wouldn't allow that, right?
No, that's, that's the distancing requirement. So on the next, so just, these cleanup items don't, don't include the things we're about to discuss later. So the definition of a fence, privacy fencing along roads, the trail corridor fencing, or athletic park fencing, that's all later. So this is just all the cleanup things we're talking about first. The planning commission reviewed this, recommended approval of all of these items. So unless there's any questions on this, we have a motion to review this first ordinance, but happy to discuss.
Do we want to do a, do we want to run through all of them and then do the public hearing, or do we want to do a public hearing for each one?
Yeah, because we're going to need to have a public hearing. Would you rather go through? That, that's the question. We'd have to have, if we do a vote, then we have to have a public hearing for each individual one. I don't know if we have a lot of people here on each individual one, but we'd have to open up for public hearing, right, Rob?
I don't know if our residents here for the public, are the fences. I know one is for swimming pools, but I don't know.
Is there anyone here, well, we still need to have a public hear, is there anyone here on the fence issue that wants to address a public hearing?
Perhaps we could, before the staff report, then we could do the public hearing?
Okay. Should we go ahead and do a public hearing right now?
Just open the public hearing now.
Yeah, I'd just do a quick public hearing.
Okay. That way, that, it just helps us since we have six votes. So at this time, we open up for public hearing on our item number B, which is the fence, fence regulations for trail corridors, collector roads, and retaining walls. If there are anyone who would like to come up and address the council on this issue. Seeing none, we now close the public hearing and bring it back to Rob for further presentation. And I guess we could have a vote on, we wanted to counsel the questions, we want to do individual, I think the question, we said individual votes. Now, we can do a vote here. Then we go to the next item and do a vote there.
And we have electronic voting for each of these ordinances, so we can do each one separately.
Yeah, we asked to do that, so we should do it.
Mr. Mayor? The one thing I will also, oh, sorry, Doug. No, go ahead. I also added on a little, you're allowing me to go through and make some minor typo clarifications that Doug caught, that I'll go through and just clean up some typos throughout the code as we clean it up later.
I move that the city council-
Okay, okay.
I move that the city council adopt and approve the amendments to section 3-612 of the Highland Development Code as set forth in ordinance one. General amendments and authorize staff to make non-substantive typographical and grammatical corrections to section 3-612 as amended.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Ron, second by Scott. Is there further discussion on that item before a vote? That passed, it's five to zero. Let's move on to the next fence item.
Thank you. The next one is the definition of a fence. So our current definition of a fence is, as seen there, fences, walls, hedges, any other combination of plants, shrubs, trees, barriers, structures, or objects that act as a visual or physical screen or barrier. The planning commission recommended removing vegetation from that. So the hedges, plants, shrubs, trees, that would all be struck. Their view was, if you plant a lot of hedges or bushes or whatever, that doesn't have the same feeling as a fence. So they would, they recommended just removing that from the definition of fence. As we talked about, I thought of, we were driving around at the corner of 4800 West, the intersection that we always talk about. On the northwest corner, the Beesleys, they have a large wall of vegetation to screen them from the impacts of SR 92 and 4800 West. That type of thing, we've never really regulated in the city. So that's what we're talking about, is we regulate as fences, we should be consistent, and if not, we're fine to remove it as staff. We don't have a preference.
My only concern, and I, I watched the planning commission, they did a fantastic job, as did you, Rob, and we appreciate that. It simplifies our job when they do such a good job, and so do you. But my concern about this particular one is the visibility triangle and a intersection, if you have a six-foot hedge and it goes all the way out to the street and we don't, can't control that because we don't call it a fence, are there other ways we can control that?
It's a great question, and yes, we do. We actually have a separate ordinance that talks about site triangles and intersections. We talked about anything over three feet has to be essentially pruned back, and we do enforce that.
Very good.
And interestingly enough, I think that there's actually a definition of hedge in the, that visibility section.
Okay, so just, what you just mentioned, to make sure we're at clarity, if the hedge is above three feet, we can then say, is there, I can see someone, I'm going to plant hedges and just block in the entire home, and some might say, hey, that's how I block my home. But what we're saying is, we have, it's not part of the fence ordinance of other ordinances, they can't have a hedge above three feet?
If it's within the corner of an intersection.
The side triangle.
The side triangle. Otherwise, yes, you could put a hedge anywhere around your home. If you're in an inside lot, you can ring your home with a hedge, and the city will not regulate that or anything.
So basically, you could have a six-foot fence if it met requirements, but you could plant a row of, a rubidae or poplar trees and be up 20, 30 feet-
Correct.
-around the edge of your property, as long as it isn't in the sideline on a corner.
Correct. That's, that was the planning commission's recommendation.
Right.
And the other wrinkle there is that if it is not defined as a fence, then any setbacks that we require for fences, it wouldn't be required.
As long as you meet the setbacks for the man-made fence.
So that's a question. Can they plant, so right now on our fences, they, you have to be, you have to be so many feet back from the sidewalk, can they plant, plant the hedges right next to the sidewalk?
They could, and we do allow trees to be planted, say, in the park strip all the time. We have some, we like to limit what kinds, they don't destroy the sidewalk, but we do allow that currently. If they tried to line that, we might have some issues because that's a city, right? We want to preserve that clear. But if it's on their side of the property, they wanted to put it back of sidewalk, if we change this definition, we would not have any concerns about it. The other proposal came from council member Courtney, looking at kind of clearing up some internal fences when we have, you know, decorative hedges and walls and things on side of a lot that don't really act as a fence in the traditional sense, or things that might be inside of a building or other garages that you don't think of them as a fence, but technically fell under the definition. So I, I took council member Courtney's suggestions and kind of synthesized a new definition of fence. Go on to the next slide. So the current definition, planning commission recommendation was to remove vegetation, and here's a new definition that I put together based on council member Courtney's suggestion. A man-made structure of any material, combination materials, extending at least three feet above finished grade, erected to enclose screen or provide a barrier to areas of land, and then specifically, does not include buildings or portions thereof, retaining walls, or interior fencing enclosed within a fence of at least the same height. So if you put a property-lined fence, and you put in more little six-foot screens on the inside, we just don't care where those go on the inside of the property. As I looked at this, the only thought I would raise is, as I would read this, still doesn't apply to vegetation, because we're talking about a man-made barrier that, you know, make a plant. And whether you had any concerns about, do you want to continue to regulate interior fencing at all, like for a pool or an animal enclosure? And under this definition, someone could put a three-foot barrier in the front yard, like a three-foot tall picket fence or something. And that, obviously, we could tweak the number as well.
One question, when you, I hadn't thought about it until just now, but when you talked about the pool fencing or animal enclosure, I missed that earlier. Does this impact the pool discussion that we have later, or is fencing separately defined within the pool?
Well, we'll have to discuss pool fencing later, because that's more specific. But if you have the six-foot fence, then that actually would cover the pool under any standard we're talking about. So-
Oh, that's right. Yep.
So we're fine anyway. Yep, okay.
So I just want to make sure, what I heard you say, Rob, is you're saying, okay, we're regulating just around the property. If they go, they say 50 feet into their property, they could put a 10-foot tall fence inside their property?
No, it'd still have the fence height limitation. It's, if you put a six-foot fence around the exterior property, and then you decide, I like to make a little, like an athletic court, and I want to put a six-foot fence around that, we wouldn't regulate that separately because it's not increasing the height over the yard. Now, if they say, I want to put an athletic court and put a 12-foot fence, which we allow, then we say, we'll still come in for a permit for that. So it's saying, if you have a fence around your property, you're doing some walls on the inside, as long as you don't go above the existing fence, we don't need to see it as the city.
But if they do, around a sports court, and they put netting or some type of barrier, they do need to get a permit.
They do. And we get calls about that and go talk to them about it.
Because we revised the code two or three years ago to allow that.
Correct. We allow-
Event golf, golf balls into people's property along Caddy Lane.
Yes. Our two major exceptions are golf balls, if you're near the country club, and athletic court fencing, you go up to 12 feet high for, but you have to have a specific kind of fence, and you have to be setback from your property line.
Rob, I just had a thought. On the hypothetical interior fence, if it's not going higher, that means they could do a material that's maybe potentially not necessarily allowed, but do we really care, I guess, because it's lower and nobody is going to see it except for those who live there?
I think that's the thought. If you have a six-foot vinyl fence around your yard, and you decide, I want to put a six-foot chain link fence because I like chain link on the inside of my yard, then he says, we don't care. No one can see it. So those are the options. So we have, I kind of, I'm trying to give you the options we have. So the first one is just to not change the definition, leave it as it is. Second one is to adopt the planning commission's recommendation, and the third one is to adopt the last one we just discussed as recommended by council member, or suggested by council member Courtney.
You need to make the motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve ordinance two and adopt and approve the amendments to the definition of a fence as proposed by the esteemed council member Doug Courtney.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Kim, second by Ron. Any further clarification or questions on that? Passes five to zero. Okay, excellent. Two down, you said out of six?
Out of six. Maybe I'll just, back to the last one. Are you fine with three-foot tall fencing in the front yard?
Was Evan okay with the three, because is that what that just changed?
We're saying if it's under three feet, we don't regulate it, and so I just want to make- We're saying if it's under three feet, we don't regulate it, and so I just want to make sure you're, you're understanding that's what we're going to be doing. I don't know how many people will do it, but if, if it comes up.
So can I ask a little question having to do with order? Didn't we need to have a public hearing on that last one, too?
We, 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 no, Rob, help me. I thought we had a public hearing on all fence issues. We've already handled the public.
So we've already done that?
Yes, we're handling.
Or we covered it all?
We are covered, we're good. All right, next ordinance. This is, uh, the side and rear setback fencing. So this is the, and I believe you, you received a, an email from a resident, um, today regarding this. She has contacted me several times and was at the planning commission. She lives, her family lives along Canal Boulevard, and, uh, really kind of raised this issue. Current rules are, if you have a privacy fence, you have to put it fourteen feet from back of curb, which means it's about five feet from back of sidewalk. If you have an open fence, so like a wrought iron type fence, you can put that right on the sidewalk, back of sidewalk. One issue that came up, I was thinking about this, we have double-fronted lots, and sometimes strangely double-fronted lots, where you have a lot that fronts on a home, and there's a weird cul-de-sac that takes up a partial corner. We actually had a variance granted because of that, because they put a full privacy fence, and it's a dead-end road behind that will never connect anywhere. So the variance officer thought, that doesn't even make sense under the code, why we should restrict that.
Wait, what? Can I ask what house that is?
That was the Westra's, but we have several others, and I have some pictures to demonstrate. So this is, I was talking, these are our current rules, um, open style, back of sidewalk, privacy, setback. And this is the double-fronted lot. So the one on the left there, that's the Westra's home. They received a variance, because you can see on the southeast corner of their lot, they back onto a cul-de-sac that was supposed to connect through, but never will. They grant, they got a variance. I had a fence permit come in for the one on the right, and I told them, currently, I, they wanted a privacy fence along that road on the rear of their lot, and I said, I can't approve that, so either set it back or make it open. They chose to set it back, now there's going to be a gap behind there. And the next one, um, I forget what this is, uh, Shipley's, I believe this is. Um, again, a double-fronted lot, they would like to put a privacy fence along their rear lot line, but it's next to a sidewalk and street, so we've been working with them to.
Is this off ninety-six hundred north over there?
Yeet.
Because there's a couple of them there.
There's a couple in this area. So, um, the planning commission, uh, didn't address this, because this came up after, and I just realized, this would be a good time to talk about how the council wants to address this. Uh, the planning commission recommended for major collector streets, those are designated in our master transportation plan, it's Canal Boulevard, eleven-eight hundred north, forty-eight hundred west, that they be allowed to put a privacy fence right on their property side and rear property line. Some commissioners were going to say, let everyone do it, um, regardless of what kind of road you live on, and one commissioner, uh, she voted against the entire amendment because of this one issue. So their recommendation was on major collectors allowed on side and rear lot line.
Okay, so let me just ask, and if, if you allow on the backside of the sidewalk, if someone's walking on the sidewalk, they have a fence right next to them, correct?
Yes, they do.
So you're walking the sidewalk, or you're, it's the fence.
As a practical matter, there's probably a few inches there, because the footing has to be entirely on their property, um, but, but essentially, right along the sidewalk.
Now, when you're, now, but you're not, okay, this has, does this have, okay, this has SR ninety-two.
So the next issue, I've had a call from a resident, and, um, actually, you can go to the next one. He lives on SR ninety-two, you might know this property. He actually has a grandfathered-in fence that kind of goes on the, his corner right there, that got hit by a car. It got pretty destroyed. He's replacing it. He'd like to replace it with a privacy fence, and I said, I would bring this up to the council for consideration.
But his privacy fence will continue onto that private road, right?
Yes, going down.
At the non-articular road, it goes into residential road.
Correct. So this was just an example of this, but our current standard is if you're on an arterial road, um, so SR ninety-two and Highland Boulevard, uh, you have to be thirty feet back or the parkway detail. I don't know if the council wanted to change that rule, I just wanted to raise it to your attention. So current rules are on, back, and open, setback and private. The planning commission recommended allowing privacy fences along major collectors, and then we have, do you want to address double-fronted lots, where we can allow an exception for side and rear, uh, privacy fences on double-fronted lots? And do you want to address setbacks for arterial roads?
So on your double-fronted lot, since the city council, or the planning commission's not had it, and we vote on that, or does that have to go to the planning commission?
You can vote on it.
Okay, the, the question is, do we have a definition that if there's, because I can see someone saying, I want a big privacy fence in my front yard, I'm going to use that back as where I'm seeing my front is, and, because I don't care, because it really doesn't go anywhere, can we state where their driveway's at, they, that's, they can't put the double-fronted?
So we have a definition of a corner lot.
Okay.
And that wouldn't change, but we could say, on a rear lot line, which is usually where these come up, is on a rear lot line, you can have a privacy fence. Yes, where there is no, and maybe you could even say, on a rear lot line, if you have no driveway, you can, the setback can be reduced to on property line for privacy fence.
So what we're changing is, right now, they have to be fourteen feet back from road, which you're saying gives about a five-foot gap from the back of the sidewalk, where this is now defining, we're not talking fourteen feet, we're talking back of sidewalk.
Back of sidewalk.
So that fence can be right on that sidewalk.
If, if you want to dress up for the double-fronted lots that have a street.
Oh, this is only, oh, this is only for double-fronted roads?
That was just, I was just talking there. The planning commission also wanted to do that for Canal Boulevard, eleven-eight hundred north, forty-eight hundred west as well, major collectors.
Does anybody know if we have places where we've got, um, a, a, like a full-width lot that would be double-fronted, um, a, along with half-size, half-width lots? Where, where, now we end up with th, this weird difference in where the fences can be?
I know.
I'm not coming up with any, but.
I know we have some places that are triple-fronted. There's a couple in Highland that have, they're a corner and front and rear, they have one side that's not. Um, a few that are just straight double-fronted, they're just in the middle of two streets. Can't think of, I don't know every home in Highland, but.
Okay, I'm not coming up with any either, I just.
Okay. So I have a question. I've kind of struggled to understand this one a little bit. I, I'm not opposed to privacy fences, uh, when I sat on the open space committee forever, and, and we talked a lot about privacy fences. I guess my concern is, is if you put a six-foot privacy fence right on the edge of the sidewalk, how does that impact the pedestrians and, and kids that are on the sidewalk? Because it seems like you're eliminating part of the parkway detail and different things. Uh, I mean, we've looked at some of these, and I just wondered. I mean, there's some along the Alpine Highway on the west side, where the fence is right on the sidewalk, but I'm, I'm not sure is that what we really want?
No.
So for parkway details, we'd still require it for width, but you're absolutely right, it, it will narrow up a court. Our, our right-of-way usually has, you have the road, curb, gutter, a park strip, and then a sidewalk of five feet in most places, and then after that, it would be fence. So it would definitely narrow it up and, um, makes it a little bit tighter to walk around people. If you have kids on bikes, um, you know, they'll, they'll handle, ours will be across the width of the sidewalk and, but you can spell that issue in some ways with a open fence. It's just the feeling of open versus a wall kind of next to you.
Right. I don't know why we'd want to change that. We currently require fourteen feet, is that right?
I'm sorry?
We currently require fourteen feet on the corridors.
If it's, if it's a privacy fence.
Right, a privacy fence, and I don't know why we would change it. It's the one area that I applaud the planning commission and all their work, but I disagree with them on this, and I agree with Sherri Kramer, that, I, I don't think we want to change this. Uh, it just narrows up the corridor, it, it doesn't give us that open feel that we have driving down that corridor, and it's less safe, in my view, for anybody on a bicycle, a cyclist going down that sidewalk. I, I just have angst with a privacy fence right up against the sidewalk.
I, I support Ron on that. I, I think a privacy fence, I, I get the three rel. Now, I actually have pasture fencing around, because I have extra lot, and, and I'm always worried, but kids, because kids do come walk, and I've noticed from that, with my fence, and I put this in thirty-two years ago, but I know some people don't even walk the sidewalk, they get out in the road, because they feel even narrowed on the sidewalk. And that's, when you're on a busy road, I think we've got to be careful making sure we're not trying to push people out into the road. But that's, that's just a thought.
We go to the next slide.
I also agree with Ron.
So the two options I've kind of presented are to reject the amendments, so this would just be to keep it the way it currently is, uh, or to approve the one as recommended by the planning commission, which was major corridors, and of course, we can always add for double-fronted or anything else we want to tweak.
Council, what would you like to do on this one? Your motion or further discussion?
I move that the city council reject the amendments to regulations of side and rear fence setbacks as set forth in ordinance three, fence setbacks along roads.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Doug, second by Ron. Any further discussion? Okay, we will go to that.
So this one also included the double-fronted lots as well, and so you're, you're okay continuing the double-fronted lots as they currently are?
We did address, so that what you're, and then.
Okay.
So I, I, so I, I think, because that was kind of checked in, we had seen that as part of our, kind of our packet, I think we're, it's part.
It's kind of part of it. I was just adding as another consideration. It would, it would be, I guess, somewhat congruent, if you say, to reject the amendment and not address it, because otherwise, you allow some rear fences on the back of sidewalks to be privacy and others to not be.
Council, do you, we have a motion to be forced. Do you want to make any amendments to, that, that you, Doug that made it, are you wanting to make any amendments or go forth with what we have?
Personally, I'm good with what we have, and if we want to address double-fronted things at a future date, we, we can still do that.
Yeah, I just want to see pictures of what the double-fronter, just go look at.
Yeah, we can bring that up later.
As we have a, a motion in front of us to vote on. That passes five to zero. Okay, go on to number four.
All right, uh, this is our first of the two trail corridor fencing. This is the one regarding, uh, whether to allow the additional privacy fencing along trail corridors. This is specifically about how long a corridor should be. So our current rules are, if you're under thirty feet in width, and you're not adjacent to a public right-of-way, so you're not next to a road, um, and you're not visible from two public places, or not adjacent to a public right-of-way, you have to have, uh, four feet, up to four feet solid, two feet open. If you're over thirty feet wide, but still more private, not visible, then you still have to do that, uh, four foot of privacy and two feet of open. The planning commission recommended allowing a full six-foot privacy fence on sensibly short corridors, one lot deep or two hundred feet, whichever is lesser. So on the next slide, you see, this was the Spring Creek example we went and walked to, so this would allow, uh, privacy fencing along that corridor. It's one lot deep, and it's less than two hundred feet. It's two public areas on each side, a park and a street. The other option we discussed was, uh, such a kind of the Canterbury Trail connection, whether to allow privacy fencing along that corridor, which is still relatively short. To kind of get to that idea, I drafted a, a, a proposed code that would allow it, as long as the trail corridor is all visible within three hundred feet of public areas. Um, so on the next slide, um, I have you all standing there looking at each side, so as long as you are not more than three hundred feet away from any part of the trail corridor, which you would not be for Canterbury, you'd have on the north side, in the cul-de-sac looking west, it's less, it's about two hundred feet. You're on the south side on Avery Avenue, uh, is that Canterbury? The road there, looking north, um, it's still under three hundred feet. So the second option would allow for privacy fencing in that entire corridor. So those are our three options. One is to keep it the way it is, second one is to allow for just one lot deep, third one is, if you have under three hundred feet and still visible from public areas.
Their motion?
Rob, one question. The, um, initial, the ordinance one that we passed, um, allowing the, um, technical corrections, uh, grammatical, et cetera corrections, um, would that also apply to subsequent ordinances?
I wrote it to be as amended, so I can go through and tweak these to make sure they're all consistent.
Good. I move to adopt and approve the additional amendments to privacy fence regulations along short trail corridors as set forth in the ordinance four, with the site tour option three hundred feet visibility.
I'll second.
Can, can I ask some questions? We didn't get any discussion.
No, no, now we can have a discussion. We have a motion, so we can go ahead and have a discussion.
Okay, I didn't get to ask questions. Public view areas, public spaces. So you showed the one example, and we walked it all, but one side's two hundred and sixty feet, comes to a corner, and then extends another two hundred feet. What do you describe as the public view spot in the middle of that? Do you know what I mean?
Go put that drawing back.
Yeah, I can go.
Yeah, um, I was just curious.
Yep, so as I, when I, when we have the trail in there, you'll have a corner.
Sure.
I was basically saying, as long as that corner is visible within three hundred feet of a public area, and it's defined as such as a park or a road, it has to be a place where people actually walk through.
So would that include, like, the home we looked at that had an open space behind it? It's like the trail went into there and then turned ninety degrees? So that was, it's technically a public area because it's open space, but it's never going to be developed probably, or actually have a trail behind it?
I would say no in that case. It has to be visible. So, for example, on this one, if, you know, say it was longer, but we have that open, it, the trail corridor actually continues north. I don't count that as a public area. It's city-owned, but no one's actually going to be standing back there, you know, looking into the trail. People can be, though, on the sidewalk in this, you know, the street's looking in.
So this example, though, the trail corridor, is that going to be greater than thirty feet, or at least thirty feet?
So this, the longest this is, is two hundred and sixty feet.
Oh, but, but it's thirty.
No, I'm talking about width.
Oh, this is about twenty, twenty-ish feet wide. Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
So this is a narrow corridor. Um, the other one.
So this really went, applies, it's supposed to be thirty feet, I thought.
It's, if it's under thirty feet, when we have the regulations, this is making an exception to that.
If it were thirty feet, then it would be okay in our current.
If you're over thirty feet, you'd still be visible and would be fine regarding.
Now, let me ask you, if we, so, so this might, might help answer what I think Scott and Brittany, let's assume, and I, the council, we'd sold the property that's behind those other homes, because we say, hey, the trail's not going there, and I know we have a water line, but if we'd sold that, how would that affect this, as long as it's two hundred, what we're passing, if the city does not own that property going past the two sixty, is that open? How does that work?
That doesn't affect this at all.
Okay.
Because I'm not counting that as being visible, because no one's going to be standing back there. I mean.
Right.
The, the people who live up there might, but, you know, public will not be. I'm counting as, from the street, it has to be within three hundred feet.
Okay, so even if it's closed in at the three hundred feet end, they can be closed in as private property owners for three hundred feet, even if the end is not open?
Correct. So you can have a dog leg like this or a curve, and we do have those places, as long as all parts of the trail are visible from a three hundred-foot public area.
From a public area.
Am I just misremembering or making it up in my head that originally we had talked about it being visible from both ends?
That's why I was, that's, I guess, why my question came, because I thought it had to be visible on both ends.
That's the, I believe that's the current code.
That is from the current code. That's what we talked about, the short trail corridor is visible from both ends. That wouldn't work in this circumstance, because when it makes the corner, it won't be visible. No one.
No, because it's not open on the, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, it's not open on the other side.
What you're describing, council member Bills and mayor, um, Oster, is what originally we understood the council wanted, and then based on the site tour, we've, we felt like we got the direction three hundred feet, and it doesn't, and as long as there's two points somewhere, basically, it's okay. And so that's, it's, this is different than what we originally talked about.
You're counting the openness on the L. I guess we, I understood it would be from where you're standing, where you had the one picture, and I'd do the other picture.
Well, I guess, does it really matter, to your point, Rob, does it really matter if there's two openings or just three hundred feet?
No, it has, it doesn't have to, doesn't have to have two openings. You could have, I guess, a dead-end trail corridor, it's just.
Now, that's, that was my confusion, yeah.
My thought is, if we have a dead-end trail corridor, where is it going anyway? If it just goes in and ends at three hundred feet? But I was trying to anticipate where we have, where a trail curves, or has a, a bend in it, how do we still allow those where it's still almost all visible to the public throughout it?
But, okay, I'm going to be, how going around an L is that visible? I can't see from, if I was standing where the one picture's at and the other, I can't see both of us. So how's that visible?
No, it's, it's not visible from two ends for each section. Uh, this is, I tried to write this to allow for this circumstance.
Right.
Which means you only have to be visible from one location.
Because if you remember, when we were out there, we felt like a majority of the council said, we want to allow it, and so we wrote a code to allow it.
So how does every trail not meet this? Because every trail will have a beginning and an end. I guess if it's three hundred feet, we don't.
If it's over three hundred feet long, then it won't be allowed.
Now, I'm going to ask, why, why, why is it two sixty plus two hundred? Because when I'm counting that, that's four sixty, because that's, you're just saying it could be two, three hundred one way and three hundred the other.
As long as each section.
It can be enclosed, six hundred feet in is what you're saying. You can have enclosed trail for six hundred feet.
So if we stood on one end, either end of those trails, we could see three hundred feet, and it's okay?
Yes.
Right.
So I'm opposed to this because of something, I think that was discussed, and Rob just said it as well, that he wrote the code for this circumstance. So I am generally opposed to writing a code for a circumstance or trying to look at one situation and planning around that. One situation being unsure how many other situations that would also create.
And perhaps another situation that that creates is if we imagine any other trail that we have, then three hundred feet in from every street or every park, and have privacy fencing on both sides.
They're cause and effect.
Not if the trail's longer than three hundred feet.
Well, no, but what are you saying? You could have three hundred, I, this is, I think...
Essentially, it becomes a block length. A block that's roughly six hundred feet.
What Councilmember Bills, I think, is saying, we are looking, and I, we're applying one code to one area to try to please a couple property owners here, but we don't understand what we just did throughout the whole city.
I think any given scenario that a corridor is only three hundred feet and it's visible from one end, I don't see why it can't be a privacy fence.
To me, it's six hundred feet. You say three hundred, it's another three hundred feet. It's privacy, three hundred and three hundred.
It's visible for three hundred feet. That, that trail is visible for three hundred feet, and then it goes off to the right. And that visibility is enough that we would allow privacy fences, because we can see back there three hundred feet. If it's five hundred feet, no, that's too far. We can't see what's going on five hundred feet, but we can three hundred feet.
I think that works great if your trail is totally straight. But if your trail is like curving, then I think you can't see as well, and that gets a little bit harder to differentiate.
Yeah, this gets nuanced. And you're right, and yet I still feel the need to... I see it quite differently than you do, Brittany, and I understand your perspective. I really do. But anytime we could accommodate a resident and do things that really do not have a significant impact on the rest of the city, why aren't we, why can't we do that? Now, the question is, does this have a significant impact? But I'm looking at this and going, if the trail's three hundred feet and we have visibility from one side of that trail, why not allow that in any other situation in the city?
So I guess my response would be is because we don't know what all the situations are, number one. And number two, I bet I could go to every house in the city and I could find like one code where we could change for that house and feel like, look, we can do this for that one homeowner, and it like won't affect everybody else.
I think that's representative government, in my view.
I feel like that's more spot zoning. You're more like looking at one area and making a change to accommodate that one area, not knowing where it will have ramifications. But you and I talked yesterday, and I'm good with disagreeing on this.
Okay, we have a motion before us, unless we're going to have an alternate motion, we need to vote on the current motion before us.
So just one other question. So we already have areas in the city where this is violated on trails. So there's the trail that comes from the city center down to sixty-four hundred west. That's a long, narrow corridor, and that's a lot more than three hundred feet. And yet, it's used constantly, and it actually connects this trail together. So I guess my concern is, is this is an improvement over what we already have in some ways, isn't it, Ron? And it's actually part of this trail that we're trying to construct here.
One of the things, you know, Scott, you do bring up, what you're saying is the trail that starts at fifty-six hundred, goes across, I've noticed, and I asked when I referenced it, and we found a lot of those owners probably never got fence permits that put in those full, because they put in privacy fences.
All the way on the trail, yeah.
And you are correct. You go down that section, there's a lot that are privacy fences as you're walking. And then I go, and when I inquired the city, there's a lot that never got fence permits.
Okay.
Do we know how many sections of trail we have that are less than six hundred feet in length?
Without, we have miles of trails, so I don't know.
So we have a motion before us, is that if there's not an alternate, we need to now vote on this motion. This passes three to two. Okay, item number five.
This is the next trail corridor ordinance. This is the Freedom Elementary example. A property, a trail adjacent to public property that is open, kind of open to the public. We've already gone over our current rules. The Planning Commission did recommend allowing privacy fences if the corridor, the trail corridor is adjacent to a public entity property, if there is no fencing or open fencing. They also recommended requiring the school district to have fencing, but we can't do that. So we put it in there for other public entities, but it just won't apply to the school district. So they did recommend the approval of this. On the next slide, we walked this as part of the site tour as well. This is an example of the one we just passed, would not apply here. It's longer than six hundred feet from each side. But if we do this, it would allow, because the school has that chain link fencing on the one side. So, yeah, we can go to the next slide for our options. So the options are just the current, which is, which would limit the fencing in this area, or to, as the Planning Commission recommended, allow privacy fencing along narrow trails as long as they are next to a public, open property. So on the next slide is the motions for that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can I ask a question? So in this particular trail, the assumption is that the school district will probably always own that school, and it'll always be an open chain link fence. What if the school district, for some reason, decides to put up a solid fence along there?
The way it has been written is that new fence permits coming in would have to have the four foot and two foot open. It says you're only allowed to have the privacy as long as the other side is open.
Right.
So if the school district put in something closed, then any new fence would have to comply with the normal open top portion requirement.
Can we regulate the school?
We cannot.
That's what the, the Planning Commission recommended regulating the school, and Rob mentions we cannot.
We cannot. There's specific state law that says they're somewhat subject to our zoning regulations, but then have a long list of exceptions of things they don't have to listen to us about. And fencing is one of them.
Rob, apologies, should have asked about this ahead of time, but for the language there with three C, three two A, adding in the, or to other property owned by a public entity or utility with open style or no fencing. Do we run the risk of all or part of this ordinance being invalidated because we didn't exclude school districts there?
We didn't, I'm sorry, I missed the line.
Because a school district is a public entity.
Correct.
And we are not legally permitted to regulate public entities? So we're, do we need to explicitly exclude school districts?
No, we don't. It's a good question, though. You know, I'll get into a longer answer about it later, because it's interesting as legal matter, but not interesting for anyone else.
No, no is a perfectly acceptable answer at this point.
We're fine.
Do we have a motion on this item?
I move that the City Council adopt and approve the amendments as set forth in Ordinance Five, specifically related to fencing trails near property of public entities and utilities.
Motion by Ron?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Further discussion needed? Seeing none, we'll go to vote. This passes four to one. Okay, item number six.
Almost through it. This is a suggestion from Councilmember Courtney, whether we should extend or allow for a additional height on fences adjacent to athletic complexes. An athletic complex is a specifically defined type of park in the city's general plan. We have four parks. Mitchell Hollow, Beacon Hills, Spring Creek, and Mountain Ridge are considered, I forgot Spring Creek was an athletic complex, but it's apparently designated as that in our general plan.
I know, you know why, don't you?
Because it was supposed to be the mountain.
It used to be twelve acres.
We need, when, when we update the general plan, that should be a neighborhood park or whatever our lower definition is ultimately.
We were discussing, and I forgot Spring Creek, and it's because it's not really an athletic complex, but it, in our two thousand eight general plan, it is. Athletic complexes are our largest, most impactful parks. They're specifically defined in our general plan. This code amendment would allow for eight-foot fences along, property line fences along athletic complexes and near the park. It still would be subject to the same retaining wall rules. So if you put a retaining wall, two feet, three feet high, you're still limited to eight feet overall from the lower property. You don't get to do two feet and then eight feet on top. You just get to have an eight-foot fence without a retaining wall along those specific types of parks.
And my thinking behind this is actually coming back to Spring Creek. That one case at the deep end of the park, where from the park's perspective, it looks like an eight-foot fence. Which leads me to believe that from the perspective of the park, there really isn't any difference between forcing somebody to raise the grade of their backyard two feet to get an eight-foot fence and not requiring them to do that? So adjacent to athletic complexes, that seems like a reasonable exception to me.
When I first saw this, I thought it was absolutely brilliant, because you're absolutely right. Why do we care about the other side of the fence? We're concerned about the park and what's visible and what it looks like from the park. And if we like eight-foot fences and two of them, two feet happen to be a retaining wall, but what, why does it have to be? So I really like this difference here, this proposal.
Rob, does athletic complex have a definition? Do you happen to have it?
It does. Give me just a minute here. So this is, it's not a kind of legal definition, but I'll read what the general plan says about athletic complexes. Athletic complexes should be located along major roads to avoid impacts to neighborhoods, should be adjacent to middle schools and high schools to share facilities, should provide for a variety of sports activities, and should be ten to twenty acres in size. A ten-acre sports park, a larger regional twenty-acre sports park, and a ten-to-twenty-acre community park should be implemented, which would include additional facilities, such as a recreational center, swimming pool, sports complex, lighted field, or other desired community recreational opportunity. The minimum park facility should include open play fields, picnic areas, tot lots, paved surface trails, and trailheads with benches, covered seating, and trees. Additionally, athletic complexes should include at least four other amenities, such as a basketball court, volleyball court, tennis court, additional covered seating areas, trees, and restaurants.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
What if the fence has already been put in by the developer at six foot, because that's what the code was? So any future could be eight feet, is that correct?
Correct.
But, but the homeowners currently in that situation, I'm thinking about Mountain Ridge, they currently own that fence, is that right?
They do.
Okay, so, but if they wanted an eight-foot fence?
They'd either have to rebuild the fence. Sometimes with concrete, you can add on to it. It's a little bit tricky, but there's, I know there's, I've talked to a couple of fence contractors about it, there are ways of doing it, where you kind of drill into the posts and expand the top of it. It doesn't look exactly the same, but you do something that contrasts it, try to make it look nice. So that is also a possibility, depending on desired aesthetics.
So if they did that, though, Rob, would that meet our fence design code? And does that make sense? If they add on it, do they have to make it look similar to what the other one is?
It would have to be similar. You can't ever get it exact, because we're going to talk about with Alpine fence later on. You have to do kind of a single contractor, single design, someone coming back in can get it close, you know, try to stand it to look as close as possible, just...
Since the residents own that fence, they could take it out and raise, in a sense, they'd have to raise if their property's not already at that level, they'd have to raise the backyard up to six, get a, get a retaining wall, and then they could have this eight feet on the one side and six on their side.
Yes, this avoids having to do that retaining wall grading thing. It just is, you're allowed to have eight feet, you can extend your posts, replace the fence somehow, but at least you don't have to do the rest of it.
So this, they can just go do eight feet? They don't have to, they don't have to worry about the six feet on their side? They can go extend the fence to two feet?
Just extend the fence two feet, it doesn't matter regarding the retaining wall or grade.
As we look at the different parks, I think you had, Beacon Hills probably has, you know, so Mountain Ridge has a fence all the way on it, round it, that's already the developer put in. Beacon Hills has probably spottiness of fencing, depending on the residents, what they wanted, because it was not put by the developer's residence. Mitchell Hollow, from what I'm aware, there's probably, there's a chain link fence up by the parking lot, because it's probably been grandfathered in, because that home's been there probably for forty, forty-five years. But then you have the Canterbury South subdivision. I, can, do any of them have fences down towards the bottom? I mean, because they could put it at the bottom of their property, or they, because they could put anywhere on their other property.
Correct. I mean, we still have the same rules about if you have a slope grade, we measure the average height, but we would figure all that out, just would allow anyone along Mitchell Hollow or Beacon Hills, those two parks, to go up to an eight-foot fence, as well as Mountain Ridge.
And then we've had the one property owner that was brought up that has, appears to have an eight-foot fence in the Mountain Ridge, they changed their fence and made a grade six feet on their one and eight feet on the other, right?
Yes, there's a fence permit that kind of, and some discussion back and forth with that property owner regarding that.
How long ago was that fence permit done?
Oh, I can look that up in just a second.
I mean, it was, I mean, as council, we knew nothing about it, so it wasn't, you know, somewhere we're questioning how that happened.
So don't we allow eight-foot fence around some commercial development now?
We do, actually. Our screen walls say they have to be a minimum of six feet.
But they can be eight.
They can be. Sometimes we require, we want for commercial areas to screen them off from commercial, we'll ask for an eight-foot fence to protect the residents from the commercial.
Counsel, is there a lot of other questions you have on this?
I just, I have one other question, and kind of piggybacking on Brittany's question about definitions. Instead of simply saying athletic complex, do we need to say that's defined as an athletic complex in the general plan? Or is athletic complex sufficient in the code?
Athletic complex, to me, is sufficient, because our development code generally incorporates our general plan as well.
Mayor? I'd like to make the motion, if we're ready. I move that the Highland City Council adopt and approve Ordinance Number Six, Athletic Court Fencing, proposed by Councilman Courtney.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Scott, second by Doug. Is there any further discussion on this item before vote? Okay, let's go to vote. That passes five to zero. Okay, we're now done, there's nothing else on the fencing, right?
We've done our big fence code update.
That's what I thought.
We'll wait till next year for the next one.
Okay, we now move on to...
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
I want to thank Rob and the rest of the staff for all the work they've done on this. And it's a, and I've been on the council long enough that I think I've been through three or four fence changes, but I really appreciate your work and clarifying things. And it's really hard, because there's, are a lot of little exceptions and different things, and we try to work it through. So thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome, and thank you.
I'd like to add to that, the work of the Planning Commission.
Yes, the Planning Commission did great.
Active and engaged. And, but Rob's work was exceptional, and I applaud that as well.
And Rob, if we're going to revisit this next year, I'd like to specify this next fiscal year, please.
I don't want to revisit this next year. I'm just joking, because it seems like, when I looked at the history, do like every May, we'd do something with fences, so we'll see if we skip one next year.
No, and I think, you know, for those who maybe are watching or the public, you're seeing maybe us move through, this is an item that's been on the agenda, we've done site visits, and now it's the vote time. You know what I mean? This wasn't just tonight, this has kind of been coming into the council.
Those site visits were very helpful, by the way, and I hope that teaches us maybe how we proceed, because I...
Okay, well, now move on to item number four C, which is a public hearing, an ordinance concerning swimming pool regulations amendment, and that will be Rob also.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will try to make this as clear as possible, it gets a little hairy in here. So I took an amendment to the Planning Commission, I thought it'd be kind of a little simple cleanup, and it evolved. I should have anticipated that. Our current code with swimming pools is we have three different swimming pool regulations for each of our residential zones that are virtually identical. It doesn't make a lot of sense, because we also allow swimming pools in some PD districts as well. My thought is, like with fences, consolidate into a single code. Planning Commission recommended doing that. So, we have, if you looked in the ordinance, you saw it was written in green within red, changing it. The green was essentially the original code just relocated, and then the red were changes to it, so I was trying to show what I was, might show my work there. In our current code, I've got this a few times, we don't have any regulations on pool accessories. So, if someone wants to put a slide, or a diving board, or a waterfall that feeds into the pool, they come and ask me, well, where can I put it? And I have to say, I don't know. Currently, if we don't say it, then they can kind of put it wherever. Do you want to regulate those, is the question? I had proposed that we have a definition, sorry, go back. If it's over a hundred and twenty square feet in size, over fourteen feet high, then we care, but if it's smaller, put it wherever you want. The planning commission recommended making them all meet accessory structure setbacks, so ten feet from property line generally. Under our current code, pools have to be set back six feet from the main dwelling, they're classified, they have to meet accessory structure setbacks. Both I and the planning commission recommend removing that. We've had one request, I remember, that wanted a swim-out pool. We have like a sunroom, and the pool extends into the backyard, which we couldn't allow, because you have to have separation, so you have to be inside or outside. Our thought is, why do we care? So, we'd recommend removing that, unless the council, of course, has a different opinion on that. We also have a question of where do we measure setback? This is really tiki-tacky, but sometimes it comes up that a foot makes a difference. Where do you measure the setback to? Is it to the pool structure, or is it to the pool water, the inside wall? I proposed to the pool structure, the planning commission, the structure of the pools does vary, they basically said, measure it to the inside wall, but add a foot, so you have a buffer for any structural area for the pool.
And I would like to thank you very much for throwing away that definition and just marking from the inside edge and adding it, but to the setback.
It just seemed the easiest way of putting that in. Our current setbacks, thirty-foot front yard, ten-foot side yard, ten-foot rear yard setback. It's still even for corner lots, you can have it ten feet away from the street, which is different from accessory structures, which are normally twenty feet from the street side. Both, this was kind of discussed at planning commission, but not in depth, so it's kind of a recommendation from planning commission, but not that specific. I recommended keeping pool setbacks for the front in line with the main home. So, if you set your home back sixty feet, your pool has to be in line with it. Now, you can make it, so if you want to set your home sixty feet back, and you want your pool in front of your home, you can do that, which is how the current code reads.
Have you had any requests for that?
None. It might come up.
Front yard pool?
You never know.
I have had some site where the lot is long, along the front, kind of their frontage is very long, and they put it next to their home, which we've allowed, because they've been thirty feet back. This wouldn't really change much, we'd just say, keep it in line with the front of the home, and you're fine. It also helps with fencing, depending on what we do with fencing, you can't have a fence too far up in front, so... The planning commission also made it an additional recommendation to allow pools to be up to five feet, so reducing the side and rear setback from ten feet to five feet for side and rear setbacks, with the clarification of, you still can't put a pool in an easement. So, most homes, most lots have a ten-foot public utility easement that surround the lot. A resident could go through the process of asking for that to be vacated, that does happen from time to time. So, the planning commission essentially recommended, if the resident does get the public utility easement vacated, then they can put it five feet away from their property line, but if they don't, you still have to set it out of easement areas.
I just have a question on the no easement present. If there's an easement and the property owner gets it vacated by all the entities that could possibly put a utility in there, does that mean it's no longer an easement, or is it a vacated easement?
It's no longer an easement. We actually get something recorded that vacates it.
To vacate it.
City would then have to proactively vacate that easement, have it go away.
Does that cost the homeowner, is there a fee involved in that process?
There might be a small fee, it's mostly time. They have to contact every utility company and get a signed document that says, we have looked at this home, we have looked at this easement, we've looked at your plans, and we're fine with it. And it takes, it's legwork for the resident, but we've had it come up a couple of times.
Well, I think we hold the world's record on easements on property lines.
We do have a lot of easements.
We have a lot of easements.
But it's protected us also in certain areas. So, my question on your five-feet side, or five feet back, that's not where the water edge is at, that's where they start the construction, I mean, or the, because you have usually a decking around the pool, is that where the decking's at?
It's not, with the planning commission's recommendation, which we just talked about, it would actually be six feet from the inside wall would be where the setback is.
At the pool.
Are you getting a lot of people that want to put their pool six feet from a fence?
Honestly, I have had a couple. One resident is here tonight, but I've, she is not the only one who has requested this.
Is, are they, what lot sizes are you usually seeing this on?
I have seen it in all lot sizes. It comes up even on larger lots where they, as we have more and more, they have an athletic, athletic court, they have a garden and barbecue area, and then they have, and they just run out of room in their backyard for where they want to locate their pool. Sometimes it's, they have to redesign things, or the way their home is situated, I've had requests for it, more than one. So, I took the planning commission's recommendation of five feet, I talked with Jason, our building official, and Andy about, you know, any concerns with this. Generally, not really. On the next slide, though, we did propose a little bit more of a restriction, where we say, keep the ten-foot setback unless you meet kind of a longer list of requirements. One is no easement, so you get that vacated. You have, the property owner gets their property surveyed, so you know it's exactly, often it's you're not building too close to the other person's property, you're not building it on the slope, where you might destroy someone's retaining wall, or have soils collapse as part of excavating it and building on it, you're not going to damage someone else's, you know, garage that they have there, and you can't go on someone else's property without their permission. So, just a few more, it adds a few more hoops, but it also thought, if you wanted a compromise between kind of the no easement and the current, this one provides a few more hoops to jump through that kind of ensures, this should be a safe pool to construct.
So, let me just ask, on the current ten-foot requirement, and we're just moving that basically to five feet or six feet, depending on how you look at it, are these requirements built in now?
No.
For the ten-foot? So, we're adding this because we're reducing it from ten to five.
Yes, I only propose this if this, and I'm not necessarily proposing this, this was, if you wanted some middle ground, when you reduce it down to five...
I don't need middle ground.
That's great, I'm offering suggestions.
I know, but one of the concerns, if you go five feet, then they can come put a slide right up against that fence, and it's almost like, it's, some of it, I think, is trying to keep your structure, like when you're talking sensitive land ordinances and structures, you're trying to give a little bit, as a person that has a neighbor that has a pool and a water slide, that, I mean, I think they could step on my fence and, you know, and go, I never, you know, there's, the pool must be ten feet, but the water slide's ten feet.
Perhaps as an example, in the Canterbury subdivision, near the hollow that we're acquiring as part of Fox, there's a corner lot, and they're building a pool right on the edge, and as part of the, their previous contractor that the owner's not happy with, excavated the pool and dumped all of the dirt off the side of their lot onto our property in the, I forget, North Utah County, and got the property owner in some trouble, we're working with them to remediate it, but they're set up high, and we would not allow a pool within five feet of the edge of the property, because we'd be worried just about supporting that pool on a pretty steep slope. But if you have a flat lot, or mostly flat lot, then we don't care. Sensitive lands, just for your information, we count steep slopes as sensitive, that's over fifteen percent slope.
So, currently, do we require soil stabilization plan required to prevent soil collapse?
No.
So, we're adding that.
The only, the only condition under which it would be added, though, as I understand from Rob, is that when they want to go closer to the property line and the thought, than the ten-foot, so if you just want to build farther than ten feet, the theory is that all the excavation, you're doing it in your own property, right? Because when you build a pool, you aren't just building right to that pool line, right? You're over-excavating by a couple of feet, and, and so if you think about it, you're able to go down to five feet, now you've got to dig an extra couple feet, now you're within three feet of your neighbor's property line, and so the thought was, okay, if you're going to get that close to your neighbor's property line, then you need to show the city a plan about how you're going to prudently address that, so you don't tip your, you know, who, I don't know whose fence it is, your fence, your neighbor's fence, so you don't tip the fence in the hole, so that you don't do anything to compromise your neighbor's property.
Where that is not an issue at ten feet, but it may be at five feet.
Right.
Which we're saying, I get it, I get it.
And didn't we have some of these issues up in French Country Estates?
Yes, I think that's where...
Yeah, so it makes sense, these stipulations make sense to me.
You're going to have some of the hollows as they have along that, if you're going to do one of those infinity pools, think about it, if you have it kind of drop off, you have that infinity, where you don't really have really good infinity pools in the flat lawn lot.
Any other questions on the setback question?
One question with regard to the, the latter bullets, talk about no pool accessory between the pool and the property line, and any pool equipment or utility setback at least ten feet. I don't see where those are defined, is that sufficiently clear?
We can make it a little bit clearer, so as I see, the pool accessory would be your slides and your diving boards and things, so don't put that on the property line. The pool equipment or utility, that's your pumps and drains, the cleaning things you have to have, we've actually had a couple issues with people put those right on the property line, and it can cause problems. So, we're saying, even if you still do that, those utilities still have to be ten feet back, keep those entirely on your property, but we could define those better.
But if we wanted to approve this, you proposed a set of requirements, could we add in and add definitions for pool accessories and pool equipment into the definition section? It's wherever that is in the zoning?
Yes, you can say, and define pool accessories and pool utilities.
And that's sufficient without coming up with the actual wording tonight?
As discussed tonight.
Okay.
Okay, with that, is there, we also need to have a public hearing on this.
Sorry, I've got one more topic of discussion. Sorry, this got tiki-tacky, but barriers. Our current code, they will say, current pool and spa code first. Pool and spa code requires you to have a barrier of some kind. It's either a fence with gates that meet their standards, so it has to be self-closing, self-latching, and of certain height and material, has to swing out away from the pool, or instead of the fence, you can do one, an automated pool cover that's up to their standards, that's safe and it closes over the pool. So, pool and spa code, state construction code is one or the other. Our current code says essentially both. You have to have a cover, you have to have a fence, you have to have gates. I recommended a slight middle ground, where we just say, put a fence up, but we don't care about how your gates work, as long as you have the pool cover. If you don't have the pool cover, then we care about how your gates work. The planning commission recommended, just follow what the state construction code is, the pool and spa code, so one or the other, with the thought that most prudent owners will probably put up a fence around their property anyway, to shield their pool, and just leave it up to the owner to decide what they want to do. So, that's the last topic on this, but happy to answer any more questions.
Let me ask a question about that. I mean, the reason you would have a barrier, I mean, the pool cover is great as long as it's closed, when the pool's not being used, but I think the purpose of the barrier is for protection, so you don't have your two-year-old child walk out and drown in the pool. I mean, when my oldest, the youngest daughter, she would jump in the deep part of the pool, we had to always watch her, we don't have a pool, but I mean, the, you know, recreation center. It seems to me like we would want to keep some barrier. So, my question is, if we eliminate the need for a barrier, they don't close their pool cover, what liability does the city have if some kid drowns in their pool? Any? Because we changed our code and say you don't need a barrier.
The city wouldn't have liability, because we're still following the international pool and spa code, it's not something the city can be sued over. As a policy matter, that's an entirely separate question.
Let's talk reality, what happens to the pool. If you have a heavy rainstorm, your cover pool gets full of water, because it, you know, it's not a barrier where it can go down into the pool, it's now sitting on top.
Right.
Responsible pool owner, they'll go and pump that water off, but there's occasionally, you go and there's still a lot of water on top of that pool, so you go, hey, you have a pool cover, it's safe, but they have, you know, they could have standing water on top of that pool, and, and what happens, because it's so heavy, it's not like it's all level across the pool, it's usually in one area heavy, and it can get a couple of feet, if a kid gets on it, they won't be able to get out of that, that actually on that cover, that will be a trap for them. I, I mean, what we're seeing is, we're seeing, if you have a pool, you need a fence around your backyard or something, we're not saying around the pool, around their backyard or where the pool's at, correct?
Correct. But our current code is, you do property line fencing, or you do pool fencing, and there's different heights for each. What I initially proposed was, still do that, we just don't care about your gates, and make sure there's very specific gates.
What the gate was, is for public safety, they had a push, if they were coming, they were pushing out, what we're saying, we don't care if it swings in or swings out.
Or if it has a self-locking, self-latching feature, as long as you have the pool cover. When I talked to Jason, our building official, he thought, he liked kind of having the both, but he also recognized, he's like, I still just enforce the code, but he talks to people about their gates all the time, currently.
We need to have a public hearing, is there questions before the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll now open up for a public hearing on the pool regulations amendment. Is there anyone here that'd like to address the council on this? You've been patiently waiting. Is the green light on? Is it, is it?
There's a button that says push, will you push it?
I'm new. Okay, pushed, all right. My name is Catherine Hundley, and I'm resident of Highland, and a few years ago, we had some health challenges in my family, so that a pool amenity was not just a fun thing to have, it's something that would significantly increase our quality of life in my family. So, I started doing research and looking at Highland City pool code, and then upon seeing our ten-foot setbacks all over, I started, I was disheartened, and then I looked at other cities in Utah County, and I found that almost every city in Utah County, besides Highland and Alpine, had smaller setbacks, and they ranged between three and six, with the averages about five-foot setbacks, and that's in accordance to International Building Code, International Pool Code, and things like that. I figured that, and talking with Rob, the ten-foot setbacks are somewhat in accordance to our ten-foot public utility easements that are just over every single property, which is a different issue, you guys can talk about later. But in talking to Rob, it seemed like you guys have a great solution here that I fully support, if we can, I will do the heavy legwork, if I can pull that from a ten-foot setback to a five-foot setback, it gives me an opportunity to do that legwork and provide something that's really, could be very essential for my family and their long-term health. So, that's my comment, thank you.
We'll bring this back to council, is there anyone else that'd like to come and address the city council on this item?
That's true.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Is there a motion or further discussion needed?
We might have to tweak the motion, depending on what you want to do, all in all.
Yeah, the public hearing's closed, I think.
So, the motion is as proposed by planning commission, so that's a five-foot setback, as long as we move the utility.
Is there a way to put those two motions back up?
This, oh, screen's off. So, we can, the additional change I put in brackets is side and rear setbacks proposed by staff, so that's my list of additional conditions to walk through. If you want to still, if you want to still have a fence barrier, then we could also specify with the fence and pool cover regulations as proposed by staff, and we could also add, and add definitions for pool accessories and pool utilities as discussed. But I'm not sure how the council, as a majority, feel about any of those items.
I'll make a motion. I move that city council adopt and approve the proposed amendments to the pool regulations as recommended by planning commission, with the additional change to side rear setbacks as proposed by staff.
Do you have any direction on the fence or pool covers? Is that part of the stipulations, too?
No. The planning commission was to do, just to follow the standard...
Pool and spa code, yes.
Pool and spa code.
Have a motion by Kim?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Scott. So, this does not have any fencing around the yard, it's, either they have a fence or they have a pool cover.
Correct. You meet state construction code.
That passes five to zero. We'll now move on to item number, it's three D, which is a public hearing on the residential conditional use amendment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, sorry you get to keep hearing from me. We discussed this at the council a little bit regarding the church pavilion of, do we need kind of accessory structures of that nature to go through a whole conditional use process? I'll skip over the background of conditional uses, we have a long meeting. Our current residential, I forgot, there's two bullets still, these are our current residential conditional uses, public schools and grounds, churches, church grounds, and non-temporary accessory buildings associated with maintenance, libraries, museums, and art galleries, funeral homes in the R-140 zone, nonprofit country clubs, except for R-130, communication towers, except for R-130, and drilling wells for water. So, those are all conditional uses in our residential zones. As proposed, we would remove grounds and accessory buildings as conditional uses to allow, so we don't have to go through that conditional use process, we can make it a staff-approved process. We also recommended adding communication towers to the R-130 zone for consistency. We also recommended adding communication towers to the R-130 zone for consistency. If you want to be very consistent, you can add country clubs to R-130. I just don't think anyone's going to ever want to put a country club in our three R-130 areas. Also, clarifying that changes in ownership of a property subject to a conditional use permit don't require a new conditional use permit unless the council specifies otherwise. And we have public hearings, but we have no notice requirement for how we notice it, so we just propose a seven-day public hearing notice for those.
Where's their public hearing held?
We'll get to that at the end, but planning commission and council currently, and that is what the planning commission recommended. So, as I talked, we wanted, one of our proposal was to remove grounds and accessory structures from the conditional use process, so we recommend, like we do with some with planned developments, we kind of have a minor and a major amendment process, where we have certain items that are, can be approved at a staff level without needing to go back to planning commission or council. And that would be accessory structures that meet the accessory regulations for the zone, tenant improvements. So, those are interior to a commercial building where they built the outside, but a new tenant comes in, they want to change it from a barber shop to a restaurant. As long as they don't change the exterior, we don't need to go through a new conditional use. Signs, don't need it, landscape changes, if they change their bushes or want to go from sod to zero scaping, we will allow that, or if they want to reconstruct something that gets damaged. As part of a conversation with council member Courtney, one clarification was to say, even on these minor amendments, to make sure there's still a written documentation that staff has reviewed and approved that. So, we just propose saying, I have to sign something or issue them a letter that says, we've reviewed this, we approved this addition to your conditional use. And then, so that's the language there. And then, I also propose on the next slide, these are major amendments. So, these are things where it's essentially still the same conditional use, but they want to modify it or expand it in a way. So, it's not a new use, they just want to tweak it a bit. We don't need to go through planning commission and council, we just take it straight to council for these. These are anything that can basically increase the impact to neighbors or to the city of the use. Staff would decide whether it's major or minor. Planning commission was fully on board with this process of having it go straight to council. If you go back one, okay, no, you were good. Planning commission did recommend this, but they also said, be a little bit more clear on when it triggers a major amendment. And so, I came up with a list based kind of on our planned development list of major amendments, of what certainly will be a major amendment that the council has to see, plus up to my discretion. So, this would be changes to any non-conforming uses, so if a conditional use is now illegal and you want to modify it, the council has to see it. If you want to relocate any walkway, sidewalk, parking area, comes to council. If we were screening it, so we, we're trying to limit noise, or dust, or vibrations, or visual impacts of the use, comes to council. New utility connections, or if they modify a quarter of their site or their building, council gets to see it for any of those things. And this is, final thing, I discussed this with the planning commission regarding the process by which conditional uses are approved. Currently, the commission reviews, the council approves. Major amendments, council only will review and approve, minor amendments, staff will approve. Public hearings are held at both planning commission and council. The planning commission discussed this, they liked the process, they recommended leaving it as is. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have some questions, some examples. So, earlier when I was on a previous council, and it seems like you still need a conditional use permit, but we had a big discussion with attendance by many neighbors when one of the cellular companies wanted to put in a cell phone tower. And so, that would still need a conditional use permit, and that's a major.
No, a cell phone tower is a communication tower, isn't it?
Which would still require a conditional use permit.
Right, right, so I just want to clarify that.
By staff or by council?
Council.
Council, yeah, because that was a major controversy and actually was defeated. So, the other thing is, is when I was on the council before, there were a lot of people that wanted to put in high windmills in their yards. So, where does that fit in? Because not only are they, it's a side deal with your neighbors, but it's also noisy. And we allow windmills.
I, if it falls under an accessory structure and meets the height and size requirements, that would be a staff approval.
So, they can put a 35-foot high windmill in?
25-foot tall.
Okay, 25?
Unless they were using it to drill, in which case, it would now be a drilling and a conditional use.
Correct, if it's for a well, you have to drill it, or anything else, wouldn't be allowed at all.
So, all wells are still require, because we had someone in our neighborhood that started drilling wells illegally, and that's a problem.
Problem for a lot of reasons. So, those are still all conditional uses. We haven't removed any conditional uses. We've actually, all we've done really is allow cell towers in the R-130 zone where they weren't allowed previously. They still have to meet, we have a whole ordinance about cell tower regulations and locations and size and all that. That still remains in place, it just says, you can maybe do it in R-130 if you can find a place where, that would still go to planning commission for a hearing, and council for a hearing and decision. Any other accessory structure, if there is a windmill of some sort that falls in the size and height limitation, staff would approve that. It's just an accessory structure.
Sure, let's just a little bit more about planning commission, they recommended no changes. How did, in that discussion, why, was it a unanimous vote? And why did they lean that and not having staff take over some of this?
It was a unanimous vote, there was some discussion about, you know, conditional uses are a more administrative process, meaning they're more of a, you know, kind of check the boxes, but there is a bit of leeway in it. I think what, I can't speak for all of them, but I know what convinced maybe one commissioner who was more in favor of making, reducing public hearings, was actually the statue conditional use. We had that museum and art gallery, and it was more of a, because it took two public hearings, it encouraged the property owner to work with the neighbors. So, I just remember, there was somewhat of a contentious discussion, and then we had a break and they walked back for 15 minutes, and then they walked back in with a solution they all agreed on. In some regard, it kind of encouraged them to find a solution that they all could live with, because it took, you know, hearing and hearing and discussion to get there. Commissioner Abbott, who was kind of leaning, maybe we don't need to have this as a public hearing, said, where conditional uses do have a bit of flexibility and leeway on conditions, it's good to get the input from the residents who are most impacted. Sometimes that won't always be something you can act on, you know, we don't, you know, if they just say, we don't like this, that doesn't help, but sometimes they'll say, well, there might be light shining from a pole they're proposing, it'll shine into my house, we can say, well, that's something we can actually mitigate, and put a condition to require them to shield their lighting, or direct it in a different way. And sometimes, that way it'll actually tie to the code and the council can act on it. So, the commission said, because it has that kind of nuance and a little bit of flexibility, they like the public hearing process.
Was it also, so, if it's staff, so right now, if there's a conditional use, do we send out notices to the neighbors close by?
We do not, currently. We could add that in, all we have right now is a standard, you know, our notices that go online and on the doors and such.
I just wondered, because, but people must know, because that's why they come and they feel like they're having a voice heard at that public hearing, but it is a process, I mean, that's what we've talked to the council, there's sometimes they come and they've gone, okay, because it's a conditional use, we kind of have to, you know, approve, not kind of, we have to prove it.
That's the point.
We can put some stipulations, maybe it's lining the light or things that way.
And that's the very point of why this is, I don't understand why we need both planning commission and city council. We have the staff, any conditional use permit, we have to approve if they meet the conditions that we feel like they need to stipulate.
But the planning commission brought up that residents might not come into staff, but they would come into planning commissioner city council. I think that's what the planning commission is.
And I, okay, then, then to me, having the staff look at it, and that's basically, who's going to determine what kind of mitigating circumstances do we need to address here? And how are we going to mitigate it? What are we going to require? And once they say, yes, we'll do that, we have no choice, it's administrative, we can't say no. We have to say yes, so let the planning commission do that. Let the planning commission hold the public hearing, let the planning commission make the decision.
Are we proposing the planning commission does, I thought it was staff?
For a full conditional use permit, I have, there's been no proposal to change that process.
No.
So, I, I did discuss that with the planning commission, identified.
They didn't have an appetite for it.
They didn't have the appetite to make the recommendation. The council can always make a different choice from the planning commission.
Rob, am I correct in recalling that substantially mitigate is the standard? So, we're not actually required to approve a CUP? If we find that there is no reasonable mitigation that meets that substantial mitigation?
Correct, in fact, there's some, there was a case a few years ago, it was a, I think it was a restaurant in close to a residential zone, and the way the site was graded, all of the parking would be kind of up, and so, all cars driving into that commercial area would have to have all their headlights shining into the neighbors, and there's no way of buffering it, there just wasn't enough room on the site. And the, the city in that case actually denied the conditional use permit, and the appellate court upheld that denial, saying, there was, there were, you know, they identified impacts to the residents. It could not be mitigated because there's just no way of fixing it without, and still have that use, and upheld the denial. So, there is a way to deny it, it's just, the standard's pretty high to get to a denial.
With that, any other questions before we have public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll open up item number 3D, public hearing for residential conditional use amendment. Does anyone would like to come address the council on that? Seeing none, we now close the public hearing, bring it back to council either for a motion or further discussion.
I'll make a motion. So, I move that the Highland City Council adopt and approve the proposed amendments to the conditional use regulations, provided that minor amendments require staff for an approval.
I'll second.
A motion by Scott, second by Kim. Any further discussion?
Yeah, with regard to the public hearings, I am probably alone on this point, but my reading of the property rights enforcement's advice is that the advice is not to hold a public hearing for CUPs. That would be my strong preference, and the two points related to that is that, one, that does not preclude anybody coming from and speaking to us about it, because they can come and speak during unscheduled public comment. And the only way that it would make sense to me to eliminate public hearings would be to notice CUP decisions, instead of noticing the public hearing about a CUP decision. Because I, I think we do need to notice somehow that this happened.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. I disagree. I think it's good to have public hearings, I think it's great to have public input. I've, I've sat through some really controversial conditional use permits, and I think it was very helpful to hear the citizens. Yes, they can stand up for their three minutes at the start of the meeting, but I, I think in some things, they're controversial enough, you really do need a public hearing. And, and I think if we're going to be transparent, I think we need to do those. I've always been in favor of more public hearings than less.
Is the motion that this got made, does it eliminate public hearings?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would have to be amendment, if you'd make an amendment. Are you making an amendment?
I don't believe that there's a majority in favor of eliminating public hearings, so no, I'm not going to.
We have a motion before us, which is the motion by Scott, second by Kim. That passes four to one. Okay, we now move on to item number 3E, which is an action item. This is not a public hearing, it is the Mountain Ridge Park Phase Two, and that will be Andy.
Yeah. Mayor and council, you'll recall, in May, the council approved what was then Alternate Two, which placed the Ninja Course over adjacent to the playground on the kind of northwest corner. So, this is currently the approved master plan for the park, based on that action taken that night. Go to the next slide. The Ninja Course that was contemplated with that layout is this one that we've been calling the Eagle Mountain Option, because we've been referencing the St. George Option and the Eagle Mountain Option. This is the Eagle Mountain Option, and the St. George one is the one that is a little bit targeted to younger kids. So, next slide. Recently, as we've contemplated awarding the balance of the amenities, or contemplating what we want to award or contract the balance of amenities for Mountain Ridge for Phase Two, there has been some discussion relative to, could the Ninja Course be moved on top of the location that had been planned for a stage? This would be assuming that the council opted not to go forward with a permanent stage location. And so, this is a figure that is intended to show how that might work with the sports fields and how it might fit there. If the council chose to go forward in that location, we would need the council to have a little bit of understanding is there is some electrical that proceeds through that area. And so, generally, if we see a plan, we build that improvement right where that plan is. The plan, you know, the actual construction probably wouldn't be significantly different, and nobody would probably, except for me, would be able to tell. But, we would have to kind of massage that to avoid that electrical with the footings of, or the poles, if you will, for that, that Ninja element. So, you know, there's been some discussion back and forth, and, you know, we did send you kind of some pros and cons of both elements, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. But I want to move through the rest of the presentation, then we can back up, if that's fair enough. So, next slide. So, we looked and talked about, and this was, I think this was June 4th, but now I just went blank.
It was, the first meeting in June.
Yeah, first meeting in June, about the funds that are available. And so, what we're looking at tonight is that, I guess it'd be the fourth line down, where if we opted to go forward with the Phase Two amenities, in the amount of 1.2 million, at the end of the construction, there would be a remaining fund balance available in the Parks Capital Fund right now, as it was funded of 800,000. So, there is money for these, if you would like to use that money. That is the question, or do you want to preserve some of those funds for other locations? So, these are the amenities that were currently contemplated. So, the column on the left is the bid or approximate figure, sometimes we just have an approximate figure. And, and then the column on the right is after applying the 10% contingency. So, you'll note that the total of these items is very close to that 1.2 million dollars. So, I'll just run through them real quick, we've got the Ninja Course, we've talked about that quite often. The Stage Foundation, that's just a placeholder number, but we think it's pretty close. But then, one day, if you put the stage there, you'd be looking at another 400,000 to 500,000 to put the actual structure above it. Then you've got the shades, the shades, and it says and bleachers, it should just say shades over the bleachers, I apologize about that, but that would be placing two shades very similar to what is at the pickleball area over the bleacher area for the baseball. So, that those that are watching baseball games will have some opportunity for shade. The footsall fence would be the chain link fencing around the basketball court, that then would allow it to be dual-purpose. The security cameras that we're looking at there are the security cameras that would be out in the field areas, kind of around the trail, if you will. The conduits for future lighting are running conduits through the park, so that one day we could have some Ballard lighting. And also, those conduits are really necessary, if you're going to put in the security cameras, you got to have those conduits, because we have to get power and communications to where the cameras will be. So, those two items are kind of tied, you know, if you will. That also provides conduits for the ability to, in the future, light the baseball field area. The baseball field maintenance building, so what is contemplated there, and we've talked about all sorts of versions of the baseball field maintenance building, everything from a two-story building with a score, to, if you will, just a wooden, very small shed. What's contemplated with that pricing would be basically a second building of what we awarded two meetings ago when we put the maintenance building over on that far west, northwest corner. So, basically, a duplicate of that, the thinking being that, right now, it's July 2nd, and it sounds funny to say, but winter, winter is fast approaching. And so, if we want to react quickly, you know, it'd be quickest to just add in, we've already got a contractor who's going to build us one, just say, hey, build us two. Probably what we would do in that case is make. Probably what we would do in that case is make a slight modification. We'd probably put a few more doors, maybe a door, a roll-up door out each end or something like that, so you could go to either end of the park. You know, modify it slightly, but basically have that same building. Then the 42-inch fence along 5600 West, that would be right behind the sidewalk. And it would be the same fence that's around the front of the playground. And the idea would be, if you're there watching the baseball, that, you know, you've got a little bit of a barrier for your younger children to not run right out in the road. Allow you to kind of, not, not I say you should ever take your focus off your kid, but, you know, you've got to watch the game. And you have some confidence that you know where the kids are going to be. And then if we are going to put in the maintenance building, the thought was, we'd probably put a drinking maintenance building or directly adjacent to it. But something that's there in the vicinity of the baseball, so that if you're right there and you get that building. We do have the drinking fountain that's over by the, by the pickleball. And it's not that far from baseball. But it seemed if you were going to go to the trouble of putting in the base, the building, just amount of drinking fountain side of it, you know, water source, probably a drinking fountain and bottle filler or something of that nature. So those are the, you know, as we talked, as, you know, councils talked and as we've talked over time, those are the kind of the amenities that have been contemplated or that we've honed in on. So, you know, whether it's sheer luck or good planning, I'm not sure. But we're pretty close to that budget figure that we talked about, you know, a couple, a couple of meetings ago of around 1.2 million, if you'd like to award those elements. If you go forward, and then we will back up, I promise. So in the, in the suggested motion, what we have indicated is that if you will just list the items that you would like to include, and the way that the staff, the suggested motion is written, it is slightly different than your staff report. But Councilmember Courtney did point out that it would be a good idea to indicate that you're authorizing the contingent funds. And I apologize, I fixed this in one version, I did not fix it in the other. And so if you would clarify that what you're authorizing is that single contingency. So we're not trying to ask for a 10% markup on top of a 10% markup. What we're trying to clarify is that if you tell us, let's just say, if you tell us to build the shades over the, over the bleachers and build the maintenance building, that the dollars that you were actually authorizing is the contingent funds in that table. So that being said, Brooklyn, if you could take us clear back to the master plan option that we looked at very first, that's where I thought we could maybe have a little discussion.
You're talking about dollar amounts?
Okay, there we go, right there. So I know that there may be some discussion and happy to answer questions.
Might I, before we start discussion relating to the stage or the Ninja Course, which I think are the only two items that may be under discussion, might I, at this point, recognizing that we can always have a second motion to fund additional things, move to approve everything except for the Ninja Course and the Stage Foundation? Does anyone, would anyone object to just getting those out of the way?
I have a question on, let me ask you on the Futsal Fence. Is that going to interfere with the basketball? So if we put the Futsal Fence in, how's it going to affect the basketball standards? And are we going to have it where the kids can't play? Is it going to affect that basketball play?
So because Futsal was kind of a late-breaking add, and at the point that we decided to paint the court with the Futsal lines, we actually already had those where the basketball foundations are cast in the, in the, in the concrete. We had to get a little bit creative with how we do the goals. So it's probably the reverse in that the basketball goals will kind of interfere with the Futsal, meaning what we're going to do is we're going to create some swing-out, if you will, goals that hang on, hang off the fence. And the basketball column that supports the hoop will be in that goal. That's all we can really figure out.
Where will the fence be in, where you have the standard, where the pole comes down to support the basketball? How far will the fence be off?
Fence will be around the outside of the concrete. So the fence...
Okay, it will not interfere with the play?
It will not interfere with the play of the basketball. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying the basketball will interfere with the, with Futsal goal, and it's better than nothing, I guess, at this point. But, but the basketball, probably the biggest difference for the basketball is, is you won't have to go chase the ball.
And I've been there, and the kids, when they shoot, if they don't, you know, we all aren't the best shots. I've been there with them. Okay, so let's go back to what Doug's been saying.
Councilmember Dela looked ponderous.
Is to vote on everything except for the Ninja Course and Stage, and then come back?
Would anyone have any objection to that, and just get those off the table?
Okay.
I move that the city council approve the construction funding for the following amenity improvements for Mountain Ridge Park Phase Two.
Wait just a second. Are we separating the things? Are we saying that we're going to do a different vote for Ninja Court and the other? We're not going to have any discussion on whether we want to do that?
No, we are, no, no. This is just saying, what Doug's mentioning, everything but the Ninja Course.
Well, I know what you proposed, but I thought maybe we'd get a chance to discuss it before the motion was made. Yeah. Well, we've oftentimes asked questions and stuff before.
Okay, so Scott, maybe, are you saying that on the items, because I think Doug's trying to make a motion for the shade, the Futsal, the security on those, but not, and then we'd come back and have a different motion specifically about the Ninja Course and the Stage? Or do you want to have it all as one motion?
I would prefer to have it all as one motion. But can we legally divide it up into separate motions when it's not written that way in the agenda? Do you have any problem with that, Rob?
I've heard from two, I heard from Ron and Doug that would like to go ahead and break it up. Does the rest just want to have it as all one discussion, make one motion?
I'm good either way.
Scott, you have, you have an opinion?
I would keep it as one motion.
I'll go with what Scott says.
If Scott has a strong opinion, keeping it together, it's probably not going to cause us significant... So I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, now as we have for the Ninja, the Stage and all of it, is there a motion that someone would like to do, or is there further discussion before we make the motion?
So some of the questions I'd like to ask is, this last little proposal moved any stage, I mean, eliminated the stage. I don't know if we've really had a discussion. Can you put a stage over in Heritage Park? I mean, there was some discussion of that. Or if we eliminate it here, that just eliminates any stage.
On, on the staff side, we want to be clear, right now, well, we understand the direction from the council is, that's your plan, the one we're looking at. So I'm pointing at the top, that's your plan. But because we were aware that there has been a certain amount of discussion about moving it, we thought it would be good to include that alternate, alternate plan. So whether or not the council gives us direction to then go and seek for another location for the stage, you know, find the best location in another park, I think, in my opinion, and the council can give me any direction you want, but I think if you don't put the stage base in the place where it's shown on the plan that we're looking at on the screen, it probably doesn't work here, here at this park. But you could say...
Your question is, if we don't do it here at Mountain Ridge, is there an appetite for the council to look at, at some other spot?
Well, and the question I have with that is, there was some discussion about whether we could use the current funding for Mountain Ridge to put the stage somewhere else. Because we're, depending on what we've done for park impact fees, which has to be in kind of a new...
So the easiest place that we could easily move the stage to would be Beacon Hills Park, because that park is unfinished, right? And so that could be where it could be moved. However, as we are redoing our general plan, we could, council could make the distinction at that time that we feel like we need a stage. And so that could be, if we make the general plan amendment at that point, then the stage could be added in another park. One place staff has internally talked about is Mitchell Hollow Park. There's already kind of like a natural amphitheater area there in between the soccer field and the baseball field. But that would require a general plan amendment and maybe a tweak to our impact fee stuff.
Well, a lot of discussion with the neighbors there, too.
Certainly, certainly, at a minimum, I should say.
So part of the general plan, what we'd have to do, and this were, if we state, we believe that it would be an important amendment, if we, once we get to 20,000 residents, is to have a performance stage in one of our parks. Then that would start, that's what you put in the general plan. And then we can then use impact fees if we have it spelled out correct. Okay, now, we've hit the 20,000 residents, we now can go put a stage. Is that, am I understanding that right, Rob?
Yes, generally, there's a way of, there's a path forward. We'd have to do some analysis, and we want to not replace a developed park area. But we could maybe say, we're acquiring some new park area that, you know, replaces this area that's now being used for a pavilion and not for play areas. But in short, yes, there's a path forward if we want to explore other areas for a stage. It'll just require us looking at our general plan and looking at our impact fee facilities plan to see how to make that work. But there is a path forward for it. It would just require a lot of discussion, first council and, you know, how we set that up. And then with whatever site, we decide if we decide to go with that, with residents and other stakeholders.
Well, let me ask this question to Doug then, and maybe to Aaron. What's the art council think about, do we need a stage? Would they prefer the stage in the Mountain Ridge Park? What's, what are they saying?
They would very much like to have a stage. Some of their concerns about Mountain Ridge, specifically when we talked about it, were a desire to have more of an amphitheater, you know, a sloped seating section, and concerns about noise contamination between different amenities in the park. But they're absolutely interested in having a stage.
Okay. So does the staff, I mean, obviously, we ran the fling, and we were talking about having the stage there for the fling. I assume there'd be some concerts in the park sometimes during the summer and that. What's the staff feeling? I mean, I haven't ever heard any talk about putting a stage in Mitchell Hollow or Beacon Hills. I've heard Heritage, perhaps.
When we first went on that walking tour, and I could tell council was leaning towards eliminating the stage, I was very sad in the beginning, because I think that a permanent stage could be very cool for our city. But the more that I think about it, I agree that this is not the right location in term, in my opinion, this is not the right location. It could be for fling, for a one-day big loud concert type of a thing. But when you think about quieter music concerts, choir concerts, bell concerts, this isn't the right place, because you're so close to the playground. And while we can shut down and say, okay, you can't rent the soccer fields and the baseball fields at that time, I can't kick kids off the playground. And so I think a different park like Heritage or Mitchell Hollow, where we could be more in control of the noise volume is more appropriate long-term for a permanent stage.
Let me ask Councilwoman Kim, what would you think about having a stage in Mitchell Hollow? Is it a possibility?
Yeah, I think absolutely it'd be a possibility. Our neighbors, you know, love having the park there, love having activities there. I don't think they'd have a problem with it.
One of the things when we and Erin, because Erin actually talked through, if it's Mitchell Hollow, instead of having it, the speakers facing going towards the residence, you have the performance going towards the hill.
Yeah.
And that hill kind of acts as a buffer. Because we have heard from some residents also going, hey, this wasn't really planned, and you could add some noise in this, in the Mountain Ridge Park. Where Mitchell Hollow doesn't have it. Actually, even Beacon Hills has some bigger areas, and they have hills. Or Heritage does have an area where, if we decided as a council, you could put it down there, and you could back it up, and that Heritage will have the parking, and that's where we'd have to talk. I mean, as you talk, parking, this has it. Mitchell Hollow does have two parking areas, and I guess they do have the third over there underneath the...
Across the street.
Across the street, so there is some parking.
I think for now, we can all agree that we're going to take the stage out. And then we can, you know, further discuss that as well. But as to the other amenities, I'm excited about all the other amenities that we have a way to fund them, and...
Scott, are you okay in removing the stage from Mitchell, or from Mountain Ridge? And then have a discussion later?
Yeah, so I just kind of wondered what the thinking was, because it's evolved quite a bit. So then the next question I have is Ninja Court. If we moved it where the stage is, does that affect the soccer fields adversely? What's the price difference if you have to change all the electrical there? I personally kind of like where it is now, but, you know, I'm amenable to... I'd like to hear the pros and cons a little better. I know you've sent some of them out, but I have this pesky day job, so I can't read all the emails at the last minute.
Sorry about that. So in a, I'll try to be a little bit concise, although I'm happy to go into as much detail as the council would like me to go on that pros and cons. So the stage can fit in the, the stage. The Ninja Course can fit in the stage location without impacting the play fields. It basically takes, you know, if you were to strike a line along the south line between the two pavilions that are there today, it's, you know, finishes or its southern edge is about that line. So the soccer play fields, that large rectangular, rectangular area, it can fit there. So probably the two number-one negatives to that location for the Ninja Course are, number one, right now, the pavilion and the flagpole are kind of like the focal point of the main entry gate to the park. You'll have the sign that says whatever we end up calling it. And then you'll, you'll have the veterans' pavilion, and you'll have the flagpole. So, you know, it's a question, and it's a value judgment, you know, and that's a very opinion-driven. Every one of you have your own opinions. But does having that Ninja part, Ninja Course right behind that detract from that as the focal point? There's, there's one, you know, con to that location. The second con to that location is, how do you then incorporate the temporary stage? Because if, if we do place the Ninja Course at that location, then we'll, we'll ultimately extend that power source that we have for the temporary stage to the south side of the Ninja Course, so that the temporary stage for the events would be on the south side of that. The, the question is, how do you incorporate that stage into the flow of the fling events in that it's envisioned that the long winding sidewalk that's on the south end of the playground and all the amenities is kind of, the, the south end of that, south side of that is the vendor row as you walk through there for, for fling? And so how do you then, you know, encourage that stage to be incorporated into that event? And in some of the materials that were sent, we showed some very crudely drawn, not crude as in rude way, but just crude as in rough, you know, sidewalks that might, you know, pull you down to that stage. And you could maybe put some additional, you know, vendors along those sidewalks, et cetera. But, but it's a little harder to incorporate that temporary stage into the events if it's a little farther south. In my opinion, those were probably the two strongest, although other people, you know, we had a whole list of them, and other people might feel different on, on that. The, the pros to the location in the middle is, it's a little more, a little closer to probably the uses that age-wise are a little more cohesive, right? You're likely to have a little older users of the basketball court. And the Futsal, well, Futsal's going to be all ages. But, you know, you're kind of closer to the pickleball courts, basketball courts. So you're a little, little closer to those uses. And then probably the, you know, the biggest plus is that it moves that, an element. And I don't know that specifically the Ninja Course, but any element. I think that the, usually councils heard from those that live on the west and have said, please don't bring anything closer to us. And they focused specifically on the Ninja. But I, I think that I would, you know, generally think that any sort of activity that we were putting over there, they'd, they'd say, hey, you know, what we've got is, is close enough. And, and so it moves that farther away. So then if you want to also analyze the current location under the same, you know, pros and cons, you know, the pro to the current location is, well, let me speak to one more. So I want to speak to one more over in the center. If you're, say you're having a family event and, at the pavilion, or a group of any kind. Generally, it seems like if you're going to have an event like that, you have some overflow activities you plan next to it on, on the grass areas, right? So you, a lot of people play nine-square, or they might bring, I don't know, croquet, or, you know, any, any sort of number of activities. And so having some unprogrammed space around that big pavilion is nice, be it the, the grass areas that are on either side of it, or, you know, the large area where the stage is contemplated on the south of it. So that, that is a nice feature for that pavilion to have some... So that, that is a nice feature for that pavilion to have some open space that you can just, you know, have some events with you, with whatever your group that went to the pavilion. Um, over on the west, uh, the advantages, uh, that we can see are the, uh, Ninja Course would be a little more visible. Uh, meaning, uh, if we're gonna build these and spend all this money, uh, then you obviously want these facilities to be used. So, uh, people would be able to see it a little bit better. It, uh, is, doesn't, you know, conversely, it doesn't interrupt the events and, and, uh, the, the flow and the, the draw into the stage and the incorporation of the stage into the fling probably works a little better uh, with it, with it over there. Sorry, I'm just jogging my memory. And, uh, you know, it, it does, uh, you know, over there on the west, uh, it's probably easier to create, um, permanent shade for the Ninja Course area. Meaning most of your sun's coming from the south and the west. And so, uh, in the, uh, stage area, you could put up some trees on the west side of it. Um, but because you wanna keep those play fields open, you know, putting a real line of trees right behind it is probably gonna be tough, uh, you know, directly on the south. So over on the, on the far west, it's gonna be a little easier to shade it, uh, you know, and put up.
Natural vegetation.
You put some trees and let them grow both on the south and the west. Uh, and, uh.
I think the other major item, Andy, is cost that you haven't hit yet.
Yeah, uh, cost-wise, um, either way, you're gonna remove some elements that we've already built, right? And you're gonna have to heal, heal some landscape. But it feels alike and, and the council will have to weigh in on this, but it feels like to the staff that, that, uh, if we do move the Ninja Course to the stage location, that, uh, there will need to be a little more extensive sidewalk work, um, that goes with that. That goes back to that rudimentary drawing that we tossed out, uh, saying, hey, if you're gonna move it to this location, you may wanna think of some additional pathways, both to bypass the pavilion, so you aren't walking right through the events if you're going to the Ninja Course, and also to then draw that, uh, event around the south side of theirs. Those, those aren't mandates, but, uh, certainly there's, there would be a cost of those walks. We're estimating those about 50,000 and then there would be 15,000 or so to extend, uh, the, the electrical for the temporary stage. So, um, probably you're looking at, uh, about an extra 65,000 to put it in the middle versus over on the west. So, I don't know. Is there other pros and cons, other people remember you wanna discuss? Trying to be a lot relatively brief, but happy to go into as much details.
Can you clarify that? Did you say it cost us $65,000 more?
Probably, yeah. I mean, the council'd have to make final decision as to how many, you know, how many extra sidewalks you'd like us to put around the, the Ninja Course, um, or leading to it. But if you put those that were suggested on that, like I said, kinda rudimentary drawing and those, I'll just describe them for the public. Those were sidewalks that would kind of go either side of the pavilion. So that, uh, that one concern is that, uh, we wouldn't want, uh, you know, if, if I rented the, the pavilion for a, a family reunion, say, and we're having a family reunion, I wouldn't want people kinda going through the pavilion either to get to the Ninja Course or to leave the Ninja Course right through my event, right? And so we suggested we may wanna put some additional walks that kinda guide you around the pavilion, kind of give a little buffer space. And then also we suggested that in order to overcome that, uh, Highland Fling incorporation, uh, feel or the feel and flow for the fling, that we may want to put a wider sidewalk that kind of encapsulated the, uh, uh, the, the Ninja Course to kind of draw you down to the stage during the events. Uh, neither of which are mandatory. They, as they look at the plan, they sorta, uh, the fit and flow feel a little better with those walks.
Let me ask another question. So, um, we've discussed quite a bit about putting, I mean, we've widened the trail corridor on the west side to kinda mitigate some of the concerns of the residents that live there. And, um, I, I brought a check in from the foundation, David received it Monday, I hope. And, uh, there were $7,000 in there for extra trees. Could some of those trees, I mean, there's been a concern that all the trees are gonna be deciduous. Could some of those trees be evergreens? Cause they grow fast and they, uh.
It can be. Most of the trees that are going in the park right now are deciduous. It can be evergreens. They just need to go in the right location to, to be evergreens. Uh, to date, uh, most of what we've incorporated have been deciduous.
But evergreens grow quickly and they actually provide a little more.
They do.
Cover and mitigation and different things.
You, you're actually alluding to one thing that I wanted to give in my presentation that I did not, uh, give, uh, and I apologize about that. And that is that in nothing that we have proposed tonight, in the dollar values that we've proposed and the amenities we've proposed beyond the trees that you're speaking of. And we, we were aware that, uh, the additional monies had been given and so we've, uh, informed the contractor that, hey, we're gonna put another, uh, another number of trees along that west.
I think it's 14, isn't it?
It's 13 or 14. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna quote it on, on the record, but you, you've probably done the math and I trust you. But put, put a number of more trees on that west side. Um, but we have not proposed any sound mitigation beyond that. I know that that has been a discussion with the neighbors. And so, uh, any element relative to further sound mitigation or other things that you would like us to pursue, we would need some guidance for. But if I'm being a little bit candid, uh, with where we are in the calendar year system, calendar year of things, uh, if we're going to investigate options, something like that, it's probably something that would be built next year or something like that. The one thing that we need as staff tonight, we will take whatever direction you provide. But we need some finality to what we're building this year.
We, we need a, what the staff's saying, need a vote up or down. We need to get decisions done because we're missing.
Right, we need to do it.
Yeah, the, 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 the year is quickly passing us by. We're out there working. But, but I need to be able to give the contractors, okay, this is the package of work for this year. This is what we're looking at for this year. Finality, we're done. Anything we're doing beyond that future years, just because if I don't, if I don't come to a close, and I'm not trying to be harsh or rude or anything, if I don't bring some of those what-ifs or unknowns to a close, we're just not gonna be able to, to, uh, quote unquote, put our head down and go to work and get it done.
Well, and I understand that, Andy.
We can't investigate anything in the future. It's just, how much do we wanna build this year?
But at the same time, we did address another mitigation. We're gonna allow them to put their fence up another two feet.
Correct, yes.
And that's gotta be helpful with sound barrier.
Yes, you, you did.
Okay, so you've answered my questions. I'm sure everybody else needs it.
So council, maybe to help get some decisions, on the pavilion, is it, I'm sorry, on the stage, is everyone agreeable that the stage is not gonna be going in Mountain Ridge Park? I mean, so as, as we're looking at a motion, that won't be part of that. Is there anyone that feels different that the stage should be here at this park?
No.
Okay, so we know now that the stage is off.
The stage is off. I, I would like to ask Andy, in terms of that $100,000 that was for the foundation, could that then be used for, uh, mitigating sound? If you explore what options we would have and bring that back to the council?
You're saying the 7,000?
The, the 100,000. If we don't put the stage in for the foundation, there's $100,000 there. And if we don't put that in, um, to this decision tonight, could we then ha, ask the staff to look at sound mitigation? That we could use that $100,000 for?
Is that something we can come back and another?
Yeah, you could come back and address. What I would suggest, if you're gonna do that though, I wouldn't, uh, you know, necessarily say we're gonna spend $100,000. I would just say, give us some direction. Hey, okay, you know, uh, okay, we're happy with elements A, B, C, and D, whatever those elements are, move forward with those. Uh, and, and, you know, come back and look some sound mitigation. I just wanna build a realistic expectation though. If we come back and we look, it's probably something that you're building next year or adding, you know? I mean, it, it's just, at a certain point, I gotta tell them, okay, guys, go, build, build, build. Don't stop. Get it done before winter.
So that goes our next decision. Is there anything other than the stage coming off of the list? Is there anything that you look on that 1.2, it's 1,219,114,15. We're eliminating the 110,000. Is there anything else that's up for discussion to be eliminated?
I believe that I am, well, once again, I was wrong before. Maybe I'm wrong this time. Um, I, I believe that I am probably alone in not wanting to fund the, um, Ninja Course at this point. And it is for me the same, part of the same reason why I don't want the stage to be there. That if the stage is there, then we're having conflicts between amenities in the park. Um, I am concerned about traffic and, um, parking in the short term. And the solution to that is to minimize programming on the fields. And so once again, we're putting ourselves in a spot where we're having conflicts between amenities in the park. Um, I, I'm not opposed to it. I, I'm opposed to it now.
My question is, the amenities have already been approved. Are these new amenities gonna be adding to the conflict of that parking?
Um, to me, either the Ninja Course is going to bring meaningful traffic to the park, in which case it's going to have an effect on parking and traffic, or it is not, in which case I don't want to spend $568,000 on it.
Okay, so other than Doug saying let's don't fund the Ninja Course, are there others that are of the same opinion, not defending? I'm just saying is we're looking to try to get a motion put together. Okay, it appears, the, the council appears to be favorable on the Ninja Course. Now I think it comes down to the location. Is there an appetite to move it to the stage or to keep it at the current location?
Oh, you're talking about the Ninja Court now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My, the Ninja Course staying on the west side or to move it to the middle?
Stay on the west side. Moving it to the middle is just not a viable option. We already.
Is there anyone that has the appetite to move this, this Ninja Course to the middle?
I would be good with moving it to the middle, but I'm also good with leaving it. On the west.
With that, I think we're now prepared for a motion. I think you guys kinda know now where you're going. Hey, is there someone that wanna make some motion?
I'm sure that city council approved the construction funding for the following amenity improvements for Mountain Ridge Park Phase Two. Yeah.
All right, that's kind of a hard motion. We apologize about that.
Well, just do, uh, for all the amenities excluding the stage foundation. Can I do that? No, you can go.
Yeah, that's.
Plus a 10% contingency?
Uh-huh, plus a 10% contingency. And authorize the city administrator to sign the appropriate contract documents with the companies and per the expenses associated with improvements is provided in the council packet materials and staff report, report. Authorizing staff to administer, well, a 10% contingency for unforeseen construction expenses.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Kim, seconded by Scott. Okay, as we, Stephanie, are you clear on that motion? It's everything but the stage, correct? That's my understanding of the, okay. We'll now go to vote.
So can we have, we'll be discussing?
I'm sorry, is there further discussion?
I'd just like to say something. I, you know, I understand the concerns of the people on the west side of the park. I mean, I've had the same concerns about being next to the east-west corridor. Um, however, I will say this, it is, east-west corridor is busy, creates a lot of noise. It's certainly changed when I work out in the garden. I miss the quiet we used to have there. But I use the east-west corridor all the time. I used it four or five times yesterday. Um, it, it does add an important benefit for the common good. However, when I'm in my house, I don't hear the noise, except when the American Fire Department runs down there with their sirens, which isn't too often. So my feeling is, is as a council, as this park has developed over the years, we have really tried to mitigate a lot of issues. So originally the park maintenance building was supposed to be there. We approved it as a council years ago. And there was appeal done by the residents and they lost the appeal. But then we looked at it again and moved the park maintenance building. I mean, it was, it's a big structure behind, um, you know, the city, um, community center. We've also, you know, there was a big discussion whether we're gonna have pickleball tournaments there. I didn't think it would ever happen because with that was they had to raise a million dollars. And I just thought, I'll, I'll believe that when I see it. So I was never real worried, but the whole neighborhood got really wound up about it, but I knew it would never happen, to be honest. But we've been trying to mitigate this. I mean, we're planting more trees, we've moved the Ninja Court. You know, we're trying to do everything we can to soften the blow. We moved the garbage cans to the other side of the park. We just allowed them to put their fence up another two feet. I think, I think we've really tried to mitigate things. But this is a public park and I think it's important to have amenities for all age groups. I personally think the Ninja Court will be used, but not just by teenagers. It'll probably be used by a lot of adults. And I can see people going in and using the Ninja Court and then walking around the trail. So I, I think, you know, I think there's been a lot of effort to decrease the sound. We've put in a curfew. We're working with the police department to kinda patrol it more. I would support a neighborhood watch. You know, I'm, I'm willing to work on all these things. But it is a public park with public amenities. It's always meant, been meant to me a public park. And so I, I just think we always need to take and concern the neighbors, but at the same time, we can't eliminate the use of the park. Um, and that's kinda where I'm at.
If it's, I'd like to, I actually found out, you know, there were some comments I'd heard. And we always believe, I'm, I'm not a rock climber and I'm not, so I'm not familiar with this ninja type of thing or the rock climb. My kids will go rock climbing. And so I actually, I reached out to one of the council members out in Eagle Mountain saying, hey, please share with me what your thoughts were when you were doing this, that your, your Ninja Course out there, what type of studying you did. And they came back, you know, and it, it was Melissa White that's on the council there. And she came back and said, you know, we looked at it as something more that the teenagers and things will, will be, but we also recognize they'll be adults, like you're saying. So then I actually went and I, I'm going, okay. I, I called a couple of companies, but there was one company that stood out that did what's called a Shepler Park in the Minnesota, Minneapolis. And so I called Minnesota, uh, Minneapolis, Minnesota's Parks Department today and said, will you tell me your experience with the Shepler Park? And, and, and share with me, is it being used? Is it not? What ages are using it? Is it conflicting with other things in the park? Is there noise? And, and they, they said that they have an all buildings park there in that park. They have baseball diamonds. They have trails. And, and what, when I asked this, is what age, they said, well, and theirs looks very similar. Actually, I went, there's a lot of other, this, theirs is called a challenge course, not a Ninja Course, but they called it a challenge course. They, and, but I looked at ones that had the amenities similar to ours, a little bit higher, a little bit bigger, a little bit, you had to run up a thing. And they said that they have not seen that, that a lot of the four to six-year-olds are using their challenge course. But they noticed about 10 years of age up is what's coming in. And, and so as they did that, I says, okay, are they using it? I go, are you seeing it just, is there gaps? They go, no, actually what you're gonna find out is I guess there's rock climbing groups. And I had no idea that there's rock climbing groups. They go, they'll come and they wanna challenge themselves how fast they can get through it. And he goes, and they'll come and, and, and he goes, you'll see, they'll bring coaches or things and they'll go through this course. And they'll see adults come and they're gonna time themselves on it. And they go, we've actually, and I go, what about the element? And I think this was very straight. I said, you know, if you have a, you know, we, we all know there's certain park, a park amenities that might bring certain elements. And they said, they have not had issues. They haven't had any fights there in that area. They haven't, you know, now they're in an area that's over a million population, so they, but they're saying their park is that, that amenity in their park is used quite a bit. And I asked if they'd build it in other parks. They says, well, they like it because it is unique. It's something that's not in every other park and residents do love it. They got, they said they get a lot of compliments on it. And so it kinda gave me confidence of it. I'd kinda always known that, you know, I'd been down to one in St. George. I've been out to Eagle Mountain. You know, I've seen my kids are rock climbers. I know that there's ninja, or, or like businesses that do it, but I've never walked in one. So I'm going, I'm unfamiliar with this. But I've, I've tried to listen to the council, so I have a hard time, I'm with Scott, or not Scott, with Doug, you know, $600, or $570,000. It appears that we have a lot of kids. If we can get them off the computers and on this, hopefully they'll come use it. So, have we had our vote yet? I think we.
No, it's still in process.
Hey, it pass, it passes four to one.
Mayor?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That was the pass. Go ahead.
Can I just clarify my understanding based on the vote, just so that I leave here absolutely clear? Okay, it was build everything on the list except for the stage foundation. And because an alternate location was not selected, construct the Ninja Course in the approved location on the west that was approved, uh, in May.
That's my understanding. That's what the vote was.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just wanted to restate.
One follow, final clarification. Do you want us to bring back future conversations about additional sound mitigation on the? One final clarification, do you want us to bring back future conversations about additional sound mitigation on the west?
Yes.
Yes.
I would say, let's see what the issues are before we start to bring that, you'll do the, and then we can address it. No, but then, then we can say, now this is how we address it, this is what the concern is, how I address it.
I wanna add to Scott's comments, because I couldn't agree with him more, Scott. Sometimes you make a decision that is extremely difficult to make. It is not an easy decision. And I, I think on some of the decisions we have to make sometimes that we're gonna take somebody's frontage in their home and make it from 30 feet to 20 feet. Make it 15 feet, but we have to widen the road. If we don't widen the road, we're not taking care of public safety. So we have to make a decision that is a hard decision to make. And I, I just want everybody to understand and the residents to understand, this is not an easy decision. And you have been heard. I personally care deeply about your concerns, and I've weighed in on them. But I've weighed in on the greater good. And for me, it boils down to that greater good. It boils down to teenagers that, if they don't have something like this, what are they doing? Maybe they're vandalizing the park at midnight. That hopefully they'll use all their energy to do this, but getting them off the computers, all of those things of what a park is supposed to do, and, and what our obligation is to our residents. It, it is just a vote that is extremely difficult, but in my view is the right decision. I've always tried to make the right decision and feel good about it. And if anybody judges me for it and say that's the wrong decision, it's on them, because I know why I did it. But just know that it's not easy. It's not easy to do. It's a very, very difficult position to be in, but I couldn't agree with you more, Scott, and what you've said. It echoes my feelings, and it's just not part of what I thought when I said, hey, I'll be a candidate among 17 to come on the city council, and I'll do this. If I would've known we'd have these kinds of difficult, hard, hard emotional decisions to make, I don't know that I would've done it, but probably would, but it's not easy.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock. It being 10:12 at the moment.
Do we need, is there a second on that motion to extend to 11? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, who made the second on that?
We're extending till 11 o'clock.
Ron made the second.
I'm sorry. And then, and Kim was a nay. We're extending to 11, do we need to have any breaks? Can we just go to 11? Okay, well, now we're gonna go move...
Do, do we have an executive meeting tonight?
Do we have a closed session? I think we can do it, it's what, five, 10 minutes? 15 minutes?
Be the first time ever.
We do know.
We have a closed session. There's something that's come up today we needed to discuss. So, we are now on to item number three F, which is the 6,000 West Pump Station Road and Trail Improvement, and that's back to Andy.
So, Mayor and Council, just picking up where we left off about a month ago. The council awarded the new 6,000 West Pump Station that is on, what was a portion of the Miller's property, and this is just right adjacent to the Murdoch Canal Trail. The council deferred awarding the balance of the road improvements. So the council awarded the pump station and a culinary water pressure-reducing valve in the street, and then said, let's come back and talk about this after we've had the chance to see if the county will, you know, contribute. At this point, it appears unlikely that the county would contribute. We would, if the, if the council goes forward, we will certainly formally request their participation to whatever extent they will, but it doesn't look too good, probably the best way to put it. And so, what we did is, we broke down the improvements that constitute, so the rest of the, the rest of the bid with contingency is $567,000. So we broke down those elements and, and what they represent. So Brooklyn, if you can go to the next slide. So we kind of said, okay, the element in red is finishing the frontage of the pump station. So right now, with what we've awarded, we've not awarded any of the landscape, we've not awarded any of the curb and gutter sidewalk right in front of the pump station. So, the reason to do that would be, that way you would be consistent with what you would require if, you know, this was a private site. You wouldn't let them not put curb and gutter, and you wouldn't let them not landscape the frontage. Then we said, okay, the second element to that is rebuilding the road. So, in the blue on this drawing is rebuilding the road. And I will get to those amounts in just a minute, they're shown on the drawing. But the blue area is, is actually just reconstructing the existing pavement. It's interesting, because 6,000 West north of this area is quite a good road. 6,000 West south of this area is quite a good road, and this little pocket is, you know, is showing its age. Is it completely falling apart? No. But does it have another 10 years, 15 years of life? No, it's probably something in the five to eight-year range, you know, and then it's really gonna start to deteriorate. And, and then the last element, or all the rest of the elements that kind of contribute to setting things up for the trail crossing. That's everything in yellow. And so, we took and we broke down those, those prices the best we can. I mean, it's, it's obviously approximate, because everything kind of intermingles on a bid. But, Brooklyn, can you go to the next slide? It's just easier to read the totals. Okay, so landscaping across the, the frontage, and, and these are just directly from the bid without the contingencies and, and just trying to, you know, break down the bid, but, so that, that frontage improvement, direct frontage improvement, or what was in red is 107,000, or 108,000, I'm just rounding up. Then to rebuild the roadway is 122,000. And then to do all the elements that were in yellow, which includes kind of the widening of the pavement leading up to the crossing, all the different curbs that we'd also do to kind of frame the crossing. It's not just the island in the middle, right? But it's all the curbs and it's finishing the roads, you know, because, you know, where exactly do you stop? You know, with the curbing, it seemed best if you were gonna do it and just finish everything there. That's 286,000. So, you could, in your motion, give us direction to do items one, two, or three. We will have to negotiate a little bit with the contractor, because we'll have to say, okay, we only wanna do these elements, and he's gonna say, okay, but I had a little bit of money here. So these are roughly approximate totals, if that makes sense. But we think they're fairly representative of the way to divide that up. And then if you said, you know, let's just say, for example, okay, we wanna do number one and number two, but we don't wanna do number three, we could certainly go back to the drawing board and say, okay, well, as a minimum, let's install some of the flashing beacons on either side, so you can cross with flashing. And then if, let's, we could look at some type of enhanced crossing, be that the thermoplastic tape that you put on the road to make it a little more visible, or, you know, some type of concrete or texture or something like that. We could try to look at something cheaper. Anything that we did like that would still leave the crossing kind of on an angle, and probably would be increased in effectiveness for pedestrians if they would push the button. What we found on 6,000 West, if we're being a little bit frank, where we put that crossing is, you'll see the pedestrians come up and they'll cross, and they won't push the button. And you're like, wait a minute, we put that there so you could push the button and get a little visibility from the, the, you know, the traveling public. But we've at least provided it for them, and they have the opportunity to push the button. But without the, the elements that kind of slow down the bikers, probably the bikers would just kind of continue with the full head of steam, and we'd continue with, with where we are. I'm not trying to say that where we are is terrible, we don't have a long history of accidents, but we've all seen a number of near misses. And so, i-if you go back to the reason why we've entertained these improvements, it's because we have observed that, that there is, you know, a fair amount of near misses, or, you know, could this be better? But I don't believe that we have an extensive accident history where we say, hey, we've had, you know, five pedestrians hit in the last year there, you know, or something of that nature. But we just, as an observed point where, you know, some improvements would probably do some good.
We see this is what great conflict point, you know, on this trail system, it's a heavy-use trail.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
With regard to the options, if we were to do number three but not number two, would we end up damaging things that we put in when we redo the road? Or are they really orthogonal?
It's probably gonna be, it's, I mean, yeah, we can do it. I mean, eventually you'll just replace some of that pavement widening that you did. I mean, could we do it? Yeah. I mean, you threw me for a loop on that for a minute, but it could be done, but it probably wouldn't be as nice of a finished product, if you will, but sometimes that's what you gotta do, right?
Right.
But, you know, we, we on the staff side would probably say that these are in order of precedence or preference, you know? You know, do number one as a minimum, if you're gonna add on something, add number two, and if you're gonna, you know, go all the way, add number three. Now, I will remind the council that, you know, certainly number one can be paid for by pressurized irrigation, because that's a direct result of putting in that, that filter station there. We could even probably pay for a little bit of number two with pressurized irrigation funds, because part of the reason that we entertained rebuilding that road is because we're gonna run a number of trenches across that road. And so, it's fair to say, hey, pressurized irrigation, you can help contribute to restoring that pavement. But relative to number three, the only, you know, at least, you know, let's just toss out half of number two and all of number three, that's really coming out of the roads funding. And so, if you choose to do this, basically what you're saying is that in summer of 2025, which spans two fiscal years, we're gonna do on the order of $350,000 to $400,000 less roadwork in other locations of the city, because we're gonna concentrate these monies here. Now, that, you know, is a fine decision and is appropriate and would not be an inappropriate use of funds, but there's consequences to that discussion, decision, right? Scott?
So, you know, I, I think your plan here is very good. And it actually is coming in, I think, cheaper than the original proposal.
It's still the same proposal, we didn't really bid it.
I thought it was coming in a little, I thought we were up in the 600,000.
Well, that's, that's because one component to that was that pressurized, or pressure-reducing valve that the culinary water is paying for.
Oh, okay.
So that's already kind of been awarded and taken out of the equation.
So, my question is, and I go back to the question I had before. The county owns this trail. We pay money to help maintain it. Is the county not gonna help us redo the trail here?
So I talked to Commissioner Gordon about this. I said, what really needs to be done is to go underneath, but that's gonna be over a million dollars. You know, like how we go underneath it, and so you don't have to have that conflict. They are, they're open to the discussion, but they're, they're going through a tax increase right now in the county, and, and so they're a little sensitive, is, that's what their proposal, but they, they can chuck in some funding, but they, there was no commitment.
But if we did this design, that's not a million dollars.
No, no, what I'm saying is, okay, but what, what, if you go look at other Murdoch Trail...
Exactly, understand that.
They go underneath, and that's, when I talked to Commissioner Gordon, I said, you know, mostly other spots, what, throughout the Murdoch Trail go underneath. This one happens to go across the road.
Right.
And we see it as a safety concern, and would you be willing, and, and he goes, I, I understand, we probably had to go under, I don't think there's funding to build that right now to go under. They were amenable, just didn't know what amount, if it was 10,000 to 50,000, it's not gonna be, they're not gonna come funding.
So they're amenable to help with this design.
But don't think it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be 10 to 15, maybe up to 15.
I mean, I think we talked about 17 last time or something, I don't know, 15.
I mean, that's, we, and as the mayor's indicated, you know, we don't think that the county will say completely no, but if you look at the difference between, you know, that what we're, what we're paying for this collectively of the 286,000, just to, just to round number it, lop it off, you know, the city's gonna at least pay for 270,000 of that, 286. And that's just picking a round number, you know, but it's, they're, they're unlikely, while that's contributor, and 17,000 is 17,000, that helps. The county's not gonna tip the scales to where, boy, this is a no-brainer now. It's still a hard decision, because the county's just probably gonna give a very minority component.
So, won't you have some influence with UDOT? Maybe they could build the road here?
I would just need to get this jurisdictionally into control of UDOT, yes.
Now, Andy, you know, and I understand we could, we could kick the can, but this would never fit in the MAG aspect. It does go from, it is heading down to American Fork.
Yeah, it's, I wanted to touch to the idea of...
And it's a trail.
To, to an undercrossing here. So, you know, with enough money, you can build anything, right? But to come back and retrofit an undercrossing here is going to be expensive, and, and quite expensive. And, and, and so, can you get a MAG grant for this? Yes. Do I think it's likely? No. And here's, here's my reasons why. The facility is existing, it's well-used, and while we all observe near misses here, we don't have a history of extreme accidents. I'm, you know, I mean, it, this isn't something where police and fire are telling us, you know, we had, you know, like I said, five accidents last year or something here. It's, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, we don't have that accident history.
Have you heard, are you familiar with the whole time you've worked here at Lone Peak, have accidents at this location on 6,000 West?
Nothing comes to mind that, that really sticks out, so.
So, this could now be my question about those using, you know, here we are, we're trying to make it safer. Those using it, there are stop signs on both sides, are they to complain as a user of the, of the trail? That we make them come and...
The pedestrians probably won't. But are the, are the bikers gonna complain? Definitely. They are, they are gonna complain, because right now...
They have to get off.
Well, they, they probably won't have to get off, but they'll have to slow, they'll have to bump through. It's not gonna be nearly as convenient as it is right now to, to, you know, like I said, for right now, I mean, even though they should stop, most of them kind of slow and yield a little bit, kind of look a little bit, and just keep their head of steam going. And, and admittedly, that element to making them turn and making them slow a little bit as they bump through the ramp and the gutter is very deliberate with this design to try and force them to slow a little bit by the design. But I, I would expect fully that if you put this in, you will receive some complaints from the biking community. Hey, that used to be easy to cross, now, you know, it's not so easy. I, I think the pedestrians and the runners and, you know, those that, you know, or, or more families with bikes and stuff, you'll hear from. It's the real, you know, heavy bike.
Council, what's your feeling? We got, we're almost heading to 10:30. What's your feeling on this?
Andy, if we've got $400,000 to spend on a dangerous spot in the city, is this the top of your list?
Loaded question I wasn't prepared for, it's near the top.
Where's another spot? I'm curious of your other spot, give me one or two other spots.
So, the, the spots that I think we need to fix in the city? I think we need to do some things for the sidewalks and the kids at, near Strasburg, right at the 6,000 West 10400 North. To fix that, though, and to give the kids a safe walking area, that's probably $400,000 right there. So that Strasburg intersection is, is a big one to me, because you're, you're not only, you know, you've got Highland Elementary up the road, and then you're bringing kids to junior high. I think that's a key point, that also needs some money. Trying to think, the, the, the crossing over by Mitchell Hollow Park is, is very similar to this one, but you don't have the vehicle speeds. And so you don't have the same, same exposure. So I think it ranks lower. You know, the, the, the two top ones for me right, right now in the city are probably, and, and you put me on the gun, and I might be forgetting one, and, and I am ignoring all the UDOT crossings when I say that, because I'm saying that's, that's UDOT.
We're gonna get those funded, I mean.
That's right, we're gonna get those funded. But, but, you know, and so, you know, city, city-controlled intersections, I think that, that this one and the, and the ones by Strasburg are probably the, the top two. I'd really love to see us do some improvements for the kids going to Highland Elementary across 6,400 as well. But I'd have to say these two rank above that. But those, that one's, that one's right there as well, because, because we, we have a number of kids that cross 6,400, you know, going into the west side of Highland Elementary.
We're actually gonna start getting more as this new subdivision goes in, I was thinking about that.
Yeah. So, so, but, but it's probably a toss-up between here and Strasburg. Again, I don't think we have a history of accidents near Strasburg either, but I did hear that there was a near miss with a kid, group of kids recently, and, and that's just a heavily-used intersection that, that could really use some controls on.
All right, so Brittany has a question.
Hi, Brittany.
Oh, I was just wondering, there's not a, a, like, less in a, inexpensive way we can do that, like one of the raised crosswalks that we've been talking about where the bikers can just cross it and then.
Um, this is one of the roads that we said no, no raised elements on it. So, um, we, we would want to keep, for emergency purposes, um, this is one of the corridors that we said we're not gonna do a, a raised element on this, uh, on this road here. So, um, if we were gonna do something that's a little less expensive, we could, we could put like, uh, you know, an at-grade concrete cross, crosswalk or something that kind of, uh, caught your eye a little bit more as a driver. That's kind of, i- in the staff report, we said, you know, if you wanted to back, to quote-unquote, back off and do something a little cheaper, we could do some flashers and then a different texture or L, you know, something at, at the crosswalk, and we could certainly investigate that and fall to something that's vastly less expensive. And, and still improves the visibility, but like I said, the negative of that probably doesn't slow the bikers down, but it does make the crossing more visible. Uh, and, and that would certainly be a step in the right direction, and it's a whole lot less money, uh, you know, so we're not opposing that in any way as staff. Uh, you know, probably, uh, you know, what we did when we bid this out is we went to, well, the Cadillac would be the undercrossing. We didn't go clear to the Cadillac, but, uh, you, you know, we went to, uh, you know, the good solid Chevy or Ford, uh, you know, crossing there, uh, to, to really, you know, go all the way and, and, uh, you know, but anything that we did would be a step in the right direction. But it is hard to, to commit all those monies to one location. And, uh, so, uh, but the good thing is, you know, either way, no matter how slices out, uh, um, it's good to look at these and analyze and, and figure out, you know, the best things to do.
So council, you got one, two, and three. Is there further questions? Is there a motion, how you wanna move forward with this or not move forward?
Yeah, we do have a suggested motion for you, two suggested motions. Brooklyn, can you go to the next? So we have the one, if you just wanna authorize everything, or the next motion, um, uh, is, uh, you know, if you want to, uh, give us, give us, uh, guidance as to which items you'd like to have us do, and, and it would be enough for us to just tell us, uh, you know, let's go with, you know, item one and item two and item three, you know, or any combination of those, we would understand that. Could take.
Just, just for clarity, you, you brought forward the three recommendations. Are you recommending as a staff that you would like to see all three of these done? Because you've got, you talked about Strasburg. If we don't do number three, you could put that money into Strasburg. Is this your first recommendation that we do this rather than Strasburg, or, because I, I think we look to staff to say, okay, what, you, you know all the issues. What are you bringing to us for us to approve?
What's that?
Well, here's the thing, you are constructing it this time. You're already disrupting this area at this time.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's the reason we brought it to you is because, hey, we're here, we're doing things. Um, you know, that's a very, that's a very tough choice for me between Strasburg and this. So, uh, and I'll give you the factors that I would weigh into that is you've got a lot more frequency of users here, meaning every day, all day, I don't know the numbers that cross here, but it's high, right? You've got less users at that Strasburg intersection, but they're the ones you wanna protect the most. There are school kids, right? And so, uh, so less kids, but they're kids, right? And so that's, that's tough, you, you know? That's, that's like asking you to, you know, pick between, uh, your two favorite desserts, you, you know? Both is the answer, you know?
That's right.
So, uh.
So can, can we bring up the original motion? My computer died. I'd like to, uh, make a motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve a contract with the Nelson Brothers Construction Company for the remaining bid schedule B items in an amount up to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, and authorize the city administrator to sign the necessary contracts. So I'm voting for all three.
All second.
Yeah, motion by Scott, second by Kim.
Just on a discussion here, um, this does not include contingency?
That does include contingency.
It does.
That five sixty-seven does include the contingency.
Okay, okay.
Just the individual.
The individual ones did.
Yeah, if you add those up, they, they come up short of that five sixty-seven.
Okay, got it, got it.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, let's look across, right now we have about third, twenty-five minutes. We've had a resident here for a long time on the Alpine Highway fence, but there are four items that we have to do tonight in, uh, five B for vehicles, seven A for the deer, urban deer. We have to do B, which is right-of-way permit regulations, and we have to do C, which is off of reg, uh, requirements. Do you wanna do the absolute what we have to and then come back to the Alpine fence?
You know, we've been beating this Alpine highway fence.
You know what? I, I really like having him here. I think we should just keep pushing it off.
He's been here for like a year.
Several times. I think we ought to address it.
Extended another year or two.
Hey, we want, so is that what the council's saying? They'd like to get, it's underneath expedited.
Can't we just move it? We've talked about it ad nauseam.
Hey, on the Alpine fence, we've talked quite a bit about it. Is there a motion that you'd like?
Well, let me, let me just ask a quick question on it. So I thought the last time when we discussed this, we were talking about making a three-year project at maybe eighty thousand dollars a year, and the one I got in the staff said make it a two-year at a hundred and twenty-five. I, I kinda thought we wanted to spread it out a little bit so there wasn't so much stress on the budget.
We could absolutely do that. When I reread the minutes, the number I saw that kinda got talked about was two years, but it might have just been, it kinda got lost in the discussion.
Well, there was a lot of discussion. I don't know what other people think, but.
Council, is everyone amenable to do three years?
I'd say three years and eighty thousand dollars.
There's also, I didn't, I didn't see this in the motion. There was also a discussion about having, like, five properties that have to do it together or something like that.
Three, I think it was three, wasn't it?
Three was what was discussed before, and that's what's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, that is.
At least three together.
Connect, you have to have, it's three?
Three.
So they have to have three, uh, as part of, in order to get, they have to have three property owners together, correct?
And the only other clarification, and we just wanna make sure this is clear, we need a type and a material of the fence, and just so you're aware, demolition was not included in some of these bids. Um, and the, the contractor we talked to, Olympus, for the concrete, the precast concrete fence, wanted to make sure it was absolutely clear that we would know that they would not be able to put a precast concrete fence through the residence property. They would have to access it off of the UDOT and Parkway detail, and they will destroy that Parkway detail. The sidewalk landscaping, sprinklers will all be damaged and will have to be replaced, and that was not included in their bid. So heavier the fence, more damage to the city Parkway detail. Just wanna make sure, they, they asked us to make that clear to you.
The, the line's already dead along there, so.
Rob? I would, is it possible to make it clear also? I would just like to make it clear that if we say eighty thousand dollars over three years, it's not guaranteed in the next budget year, that it has to be, um, what do you call it? Like reauthorized every.
The resolution made that.
Every year.
The ordinance is very specific that this has to be re-appropriated in funds every year, and if it is ever not appropriated by council, the program ends.
Okay, so what's in here is fifty dollars per linear foot, correct?
Fifty per linear foot.
Now, we have not decided on the design. Do we want to come back? If we could vote on this and say, we'll then come and give a recommendation.
Yeah, we can come back and talk about design later. I just think.
That's what I'm saying, okay. The clustering is a minimum of adjacent property. Is everyone okay with the three?
I'd prefer five. I just, just beautification purposes, if this really is to beautify. I just don't want the checkered board look. I think five would really make it not as checkered board.
Is there other support for five?
I would agree with five.
Okay, I've got.
So how much would appropriate at five years? Fifty?
Five, no, five homes to avoid checkerboarding.
Oh, you're saying five homes?
Yeah, three, three.
I thought you were saying doing it over five years.
Five, five homes to avoid checkerboarding.
Would be a minimum of five homes adjacent properties must apply together to qualify for the program versus it being three.
I can, I can support that.
Okay, we've got three council members supporting the five. Okay, on that damage, the residents will be responsible for the cost of repaired damage, the UDOT and city, and the landscaping, including sidewalk sprinklers and that. Everyone okay with that? Okay, and I think we're ready for a motion. I think you'd have to change.
I don't.
It has to be changed to the five in here.
Does the, I'm trying to remember now, does the ordinance specify Olympus?
It does not. It says the fence that the council approves, which we could have a separate resolution approving a specific, um, we'll just have to tweak the, adopt and prove the ordinance, establishing the highway fence program, ignore the and designate that a replacement fence. Actually, just adopt the ordinance establishing the highway fence program.
If you adopt the ordinance, you gotta change it to be five.
Ordinance establishing the highway fence replacement program, eighty thousand dollars per year, three years, and five home clustering, and everything else as presented.
And, and then we're gonna work on design.
We'll come back with the design later.
I would also like for us to pick a material because I'm very concerned about effectively, um, entering into a contract with a single bid. And so if we picked a material, then potentially we could go out and get additional bids, um, before it comes back for a final design.
Funding and everything, but then we come back and decide on this design and material, correct? That, that's something we could do later? Okay.
Well, if we decide on the material later, then that just pushes out even further. If, if, if we could design, decide on the material tonight, that would be really convenient because then when it comes back, we'd already have additional bids.
Could we continue that part for maybe a couple of weeks?
Are you wanting to continue? You wanna vote on this item except for the design and material, correct?
Right.
Okay, let's get a motion to that.
Doug's absolutely right. We don't wanna just put that way out there, but I think maybe a couple of weeks to look at material.
But we can, we'll pass the motion as it is, but we'll come back into design and material. Rob, is that okay?
Well, I, the one thing is I don't disagree with Councilmember Courtney in that if you don't decide on a material, you're really asking us to go get nine bids because we have three different materials in front of you, and honestly, it was hard to get the bids we have. So if you can tell us, I want the foam, or I want the precast concrete, and I can't remember the third one, the really light one.
PVC.
It's a.
Vinyl.
Vinyl. If you can choose one of those three, that would really help us.
Phone, foam, or precast, or what's that one?
You got a plasticky material that's kind of a vinyl that looks like precast, but it's more of a plastic, uh, or you got the concrete, the thin concrete that has foam core, or the solid concrete. Those are your three options.
And it is also possible that I am the only one who is bothered by the single bid, in which case it is sort of a moot point.
What did the residents want?
Well, how about if we have a residents that sat here for.
Yeah, come up, come up.
What's your prefer, preference about?
Pre-casting, okay.
Okay.
Know that that does require a lot more damage, which means you've gotta find, the residents will ha, at this point, the way the ordinance is crafted, they have to pay for any damage repair.
So anyway, that's what the decision, we can get bids.
My concern, I agree with the five in terms of the patchwork. I'm, I'm all over that patchwork. I don't want it. However, getting five people to be, all in a row, to be able to board precast concrete, we're going with the most expensive way to go, uh, that concerns me. I just think three's more realistic if we're gonna go precast concrete. If we go lighter weight, then maybe five's okay. But that's just my thoughts.
So you would go back to three?
I would go back to.
Yeah, I would prefer three.
We had three council members that said five, so that's what, I thought we kinda had an agreement there.
I'll switch my vote. I'll go for three.
Be, because it's more expensive for them to do it if we do the.
Right. I mean, the precast makes a difference.
You prefer the, you prefer the more expensive fence, but fewer people in or row able to do it?
Then I think we go fewer. If we go with the medium one, not the vinyl, but the medium one with the foam core, then I think five's fine.
I'll do medium with five then.
Okay, so the foam core, how many, so it does have like a cap precast wood, but it has foam.
It is concrete on the outside, but it's layered over.
It's what we saw at the.
Spring Creek.
It's what we saw.
A lot lighter.
It was awesome.
I don't, I couldn't tell the difference.
The landscape damage is progressively more as you go, like, from cheapest to most expensive. That's also, uh, the cheapest one is the least landscape damage, the middle one is the middle landscape damage, and then the, the precast is the heaviest concrete damage, just sheerly out of the weight of the materials that they're dealing with.
So what's the durability on the foam with, uh?
The foam's just inside, because it still has concrete on the outside, right?
It still has concrete on the outside. Uh, uh, I don't know that, I even, I, I don't know what, uh, that, I don't, I don't know if I can answer that with authority, authority right now, Scott, for you. I'm sorry.
But it's cheaper.
Yes.
It's cheaper, and if you had to guess, it's probably durability goes in the same way of cost. Vinyl will be the fastest to break. The foam concrete will be a medium, but don't know a number, and precast concrete will be the most durable.
I guess my, my thing is, and I'm no, I'm no fence expert, although I should be by now, um, is that if the goal is beautification, which is what we've talked about this whole time, consistency and beautification, then to me, it makes more sense to do the, the middle range one that looks just as good, and then we can get five homes in a row to do. So if beautification is the goal, which is what we've said the whole time, to me, that's the better way to accomplish our goal.
Is everyone okay with going with the middle one?
Well, I could go with the middle. I guess I'd like to know, we have a resident here, is he opposed to the foam concrete? I mean, it, you know, there.
Would you please come up to the microphone? Thank you.
There's examples over the Spring Creek Park, and it looks just like a concrete fence, but it's not. It looked, I mean, it's concrete on the outside, but it's, it's lighter.
I'd buy anybody to tell the difference.
So I, so I'm, I'm Nate Woodbury. I, I admit, I, I think I'm open to it. I like the idea of beautification, and if it helps more residents be able to fund it.
It'd be cheaper for the residents.
Yeah, and if it, if it's, if it's cheaper, the one concern that I would have is, is durability and longevity. Like, does it last us as long as the precast concrete? Longevity would be a, an important.
So what we'd notice, it has concrete on the outside, but it's foam to try to get the fence lighter. It's, I don't, we don't know where, like you said, we're not experts. It appears that it's sealed in.
If it, if it would require a less ex- excavation for the, the footings, because when we put in precast, it is quite extensive. It, we had to, they, they went four or five feet deep. So that would be a plus of the.
I'll, I'll support the mid-range one because I think more people will be able, and it looks just like a precast.
The cost of the fence is not hugely different. It's about a seven percent difference, if I recall. Um, but, but the cost of the damage to i- i- is probably a bigger cost.
Well, there was also the Rhino Rocks bid, uh, which was a hundred and seven point eight, also did include demolition of the wood portion of the fence, whereas the precast bid included zero demolition at all. So their actual cost is more like a hundred.
So it's gonna be cheaper demolition-wise, too.
We have a motion now to the, it'd be the middle, it'd be.
So eighty thousand per year, three years, five home clustering with the, uh, foam core concrete fence.
And, and one that does the demolition for us.
And that, that, that's.
Yeah, possible.
That's their bid, and they're the only ones who do that.
So moved.
But you do want us to come up with a, additional bids, or are we good to move forward with the design?
Now to move forward with this? Is everyone good?
We can look for more, but.
I'm good.
Those two, my recollection is that with the vinyl and the foam core, that that was the only, that it was a single source that we were looking at, so.
I think we've got three council members there, or even four. Let's go ahead. We, did you make a motion, Doug? I think you said so moved.
Yes.
I have a motion by Doug. It's off what?
So seconded.
So I got a motion by Doug, second by Scott. Does anyone need clarification? It was really what Robert said, that it's gonna be five home clustering. It's the, it's the Rhino bid with the foam in the middle.
It's not the vinyl. It's the concrete and foam, isn't it?
Concrete with foam.
Yeah.
Hi.
Go ahead and vote.
Hey, Nate, what do you think about that ninja course?
Okay, this motion passes five to zero. Hey, now let's get, guys, we gotta kinda move somewhat fast. We have the vehicle purchase. Andy, if you can do that in like one minute.
I can do it in thirty seconds. Uh, next slide, uh, we have in the budget to buy two of these, one for parks, one for the city hall. Uh, next slide, uh, the cost is sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty, and, uh, there's a suggested motion for you.
So are they strongly needed?
Yeah, yeah, they are needed. Uh, Community Development Truck that's here.
We put it in our budget.
Nobody drives, and, uh, the parks, we have to have it so we can have the younger kids drive because.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve the purchase, the two vehicles for the Parks Division and Community Development Department in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty.
All second.
I have a motion by Scott, second by Brittany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is regarding the overage from the budget.
How's that be taken?
Yeah. Can we determine, I mean, if we discovered it was going to cost us an extra $2,300 a car a month ago, we would have built that into the budget and taken the money from someplace. Now that we're just a week past, can we do the same thing, or?
Well, here's the funny thing, I sent David an email earlier tonight that said, here's the seven budget amendments we already need to work on. So now we're going to make it eight, honestly. Depending on if we can, I think we can probably absorb the small amount there. And know that we're not building up any costs, it's that we got these costs back in January, and so it really has been six months, and unfortunately, inflation exists in six months.
Okay, we are now moving on, we are skipping over item number six. Oh, I'm sorry, the vote was five to zero. I forgot to. Okay, we are skipping over, I am sorry, Ron, we have moved your 6A. Okay, 7A, 7A, which is the deer program. Stephanie Cottle, you get to now come on.
Thank you, it's a privilege. I don't get to do this very often, so. All right, urban deer program, really quickly, started in 2013. We started this program with the, with two intent, and two intentions. First was to decrease the number of deer on the roads, and second, to assist residents who were having issues with deer destroying their expensive landscaping. Scott knows all about that. So our data has shown that it's been kind of inconclusive as far as the cars on the road and the deer on the road, as to whether this program has, has truly made a difference. However, we feel like it has made a difference in the lives of the residents who have experienced deer.
Yes.
In their, in their neighborhoods. So in previous years, just to kind of give you a little bit of background, if you want to look at the, the data that's up there on the screen, we have, here's the deer that's harvested. You can see we harvested over 70 deer the first year that we, that we did this program, and then we had a really quick drop-off. We're harvesting as of last year was kind of an average of about 18 per year. So the next show, the next slide shows reports that we have received from the Division of Wildlife Resources. These are the reports of the deer that they've picked up on the roads. So you can see it's really kind of sporadic, don't really see that there's kind of a correlation between our program.
And these are in Highland roads.
These are Highland roads, mhm. So previous years.
That's Highland roads for 70 deer on Highland roads?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Yeah, but within Highlands boundaries.
In Highland city boundaries, we've had 70 deer in 2019.
I am flabbergasted. I, I mean, wow.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
That was kind of a, 2019, I think if you look at both of those charts, was kind of an outlier year. I can't explain it. I, so. So in previous years, we have used a third-party contractor who would bring his team of technicians in, and they would use, they would either trap and euthanize, or they would use bows and arrows to take care of some of these, these city deer that are, that are in our city. He is no longer able to handle that program for us, and so we are looking at other options for this program. In talking with Ron Nielsen from DWR, he mentioned that most cities just handle it through their public works department. So we have explored that option, our public works department has said that they would be willing to assist us with this program. We're looking at a complaint-based only program. So if a resident calls in and says, I have a deer in my yard that's destroying my, my landscaping, we would go out and look at that situation and see if it is feasible for us to set a trap in their yard. At that point, the resident would need to sign a waiver, knowing that we would be coming onto their property to take care of that deer. And then public works would go in and remove that deer if they find that it is feasible. They would use the trap and euthanize method, they're not going to be out there with bows and arrows.
How do you trap a deer?
DWR has an interesting trap system where you, you set the trap and put some bait inside of that. The deer enters the trap, it's caught in the trap, and then we can be called in to take care of that. And the trap actually kind of folds in around the deer, and then we can euthanize the deer.
It won't catch one of your grandkids, will it?
Yeah. There is, well, and there's, that's why we signed the liability for that. So, yeah, the resident is definitely going to need to know that the, they, they have to authorize, they have to want us to be there to take care of that deer.
So, so what is, are you just, are you asking for a direction from the council if we want to continue having the staff participate, because there is a cost?
There is a cost, it's going to be about $5,000, $6,000 a year to run this program. That's kind of dependent on how many deer we are asked to remove.
You know, as, I, I pushed for the original program, because there were so many deer coming out of the Highland Glen Park, but even with the wall around our neighborhood, we have a lot of deer, and they do a lot of damage. And I'd be happy to have a trap in my backyard, because I'm tired of eating all my garden, and I have to buy all these things to try to deflect them, but it's impossible. And they come in, because I've got a neighbor up on the north end that likes the deer in her yard, so she opens up her gate and invites them in, and then they go through the whole neighborhood. So I don't know, it's a hard thing, I, you know, I, I think what the goal was is not to limit all, eliminate all the deer in the city, but to keep the herd numbers down. And actually, that's actually healthier for the deer herd itself, because you get too many deer, and it's a problem. So, I don't know, that's my opinion, it's always been my opinion.
Councils, are there other input? Then we got to kind of move on to the next.
I'm in favor of continuing it.
Scott, you're in favor and continues what you're advocating for?
Yes.
Thank you, so this will be brought back, we have to have a public hearing on this item, so that will be brought back next meeting.
We will now move on to the right, this is going to be Andy on the right-of-way permit regulations and driveway connections.
So, council, just the reason why are we even talking about this? So, somebody, these are just pictures of recent examples, so there's a home that put a driveway in right on the corner there, if you see the one on the left, you can see that driveway's right on the corner. The home on the right, actually, there's a couple violations there, that one is obviously violating the city's landscape ordinance, but then also they requested to be able to cut that entire drive approach open. And next slide, another one that caused actually a lot of concern that a lot of the council members probably would look at and say, you know, that's, you know, fairly benign, this one's actually on the intersection, you're seeing the, the before view, and then the after view on the right, and this one's right at 6,000 and Canal, 6,000 West running, North-South Canal running east-west, and a number of residents called in and were concerned because the driveway on the Collector Road was actually expanding there, and the homeowner put in a accessory structure and expanded the garage. And so what staff has suggested, and if you recall, when you approved the fee ordinance, this is one of those that's been bumped a few meetings, is the fee ordinance actually approved fees for it, we just didn't have the ordinance to go with it. And so if there is a desire and an, you know, you know, if everybody agrees there's a need for it, then what we're suggesting is that we would develop an ordinance, and that, that ordinance would include a couple things. Number one, if the road, it would have some, some road cut restrictions, if you will. If somebody has an ordinance, if somebody has their sewer line go bad or their water line going bad, it, it doesn't matter how old the road is, we're going to let them cut it, right? We're not going to make them have sewer in their basement, we're not, and we want them to have water. But if these are voluntary cuts, we're suggesting that, hey, if the road's less than three years old, and you want to do something kind of voluntary, well, you're going to have to wait a little while. And then we also suggest that, that there should be an element to these driveways, and the city should permit them, and there should be a permitting process oftentimes. Some of these just get cut in, a lot of these just get approved with the building permit, but we're suggesting that, that there should be kind of a, an engineering and planning element to these, to make sure that they meet the city's ordinances and, you know, to be able in return to then, you know, have some code enforcement on those that don't follow the processes. Obviously, those that have them right now, you know, we would consider grandfathered, but going forward, you know, does the council want to develop this ordinance, and if so, we'll bring it back.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree, and how long is the $2,500 refundable bond?
That's a year.
One year?
Yeah.
And the people that asphalted their front yard, I think we should tell them they can put a swinging pole there, there, because we just approved that. Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend the meeting until 11:05.